A pretty full agenda, so let's go around the room and introduce ourselves. I'm Dean Veneman, council president.
Tim Desarcy, finance director.
Shane Blazer, mayor.
Jay Bemke, district eight.
Patrick Delaney, district seven.
Dennis Ballack, district six.
Jake Cattenon, district five.
Tom Rehm, district four.
Matt Zachar, district three.
Ryan Hurtman, human resources.
Derek Budzberg, wastewater.
Catherine Melkert, library.
Tyler Mickelson, IT.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, I'll just go over a list, the order of what we're going to do tonight, so you have it. Number of budgets they're going to be presenting. First will be the Humane Society continuing from the other night. And second was going to be IT, we'll go after the Humane Society, followed by Human Resources, followed by Community Development, followed by Wastewater, and followed by Finance Department, and wrapping it up with Waterworks and Lighting Commission. Take it away with the Humane Society.
No, I turned it on.
Can you where we left off?
I figured that out. I don't know what you want me to do, I guess. Did everybody get the documents or in what? Do you have que- I guess, do you have questions? Or do you want me to say something?
Well, this is the first time, we didn't have the budget in front of us last time.
Right. And you should have that sheet, I think, that you wanted with the other municipalities. You get that? Okay.
Jake, do you have any questions?
Sure.
Go ahead, you start.
So, thank you for the information and being transparent about what the other municipalities pay. Obviously, when you look at that, you can see that in particular, certain municipalities, I'll use Grand Rapids as an example, pays about...
It's hard to hear you, sorry.
Is it?
Yeah. When you get old, your hearing kind of goes along with everything else, so.
Okay. So, I'll start from the beginning.
Okay.
So, then, thank you for the document regarding the contracts with the other municipalities and being transparent. Obviously, when you look at that document and why you might have not wanted to give it to us is because some of the things we were saying in that meeting on Tuesday is correct, that we do pay more than pretty much everybody. In some cases, if you look at Grand Rapids, we pay almost twice as much, a little, little over. So, I guess with this continued relationship that we've always had, I would pose the question to the Humane Society of how you intend to make it even that each municipality is paying a similar amount. I understand that it's the end of October, and I don't know how many of these contracts are finalized, but I'll be here next year, and I would like to see some type of work from the Humane Society to bring everybody up to an equal level. And I don't necessarily think that would be bad for you guys, because when, when I've done the math on it, if everybody paid what the City of Wisconsin Rapids paid, you guys would have quite the increase in funding, which means you'd have to fundraise less. And I'm fine if you want to make it known to them that this is the rate. I mean, the largest payer is paying this rate, and if they find out that they're not paying this rate, well, then, we're, we could potentially be without funding. So, that, I mean, it'll be work on your end going to them and saying that, but that is what we're looking at here. So, I guess I would just pose to you, I mean, how do you plan to get the other neighboring municipalities up to what Wisconsin Rapids pays?
Yeah, so with at least all of our townships... Better, that better? So, with our other municipalities, we'd have already done a 30% increase in the last two years, so we are getting them up to speed where they need to be. The other thing with the data that we presented with it is the fact that a lot of those smaller municipalities really only have a couple animals that come in in a year. So, with that, most of the time, they're not staying with us. Where, when you look at the City of Wisconsin Rapids, majority of those animals are staying with us. There's maybe only a couple of them that are getting reclaimed in a year. So, those are extra costs that we are occurring and taking on with those animals. Now, when the animals are getting returned back to the owners, we're not occurring a lot of costs with those. So, we are in the process of getting all of those other municipalities up to speed, but we have been doing slower increases with them because they are smaller, that they also do not have the finances for either. But it is trying to be fair all the way across the board.
And I, I'm glad you brought that up, thank you. And that we took the chart, because some of the numbers I gave you were a little wrong. And they're unfortunate. When I thought you had 80% of your animals stay, it's actually 90. So, it's more, and those are the most costly animals that we have to deal with. And they stay the longest, which means more cost. So, as far as we're going to do, yes, I do want to look all of this over again. I've only been, like I said, I've only been on the board now again since July, so I've been bombarded with everything. And this is one area to look at, because it is a difficult area. And one thing I did want to point out, if you look at their numbers, so you can look at them different, I'm sure Tim could tell you, he can make numbers, do whatever you want, which, correct? Yes. And, and to put it in a better perspective, I'm just going to make it simple in a way. With that 90% you have, okay, so the majority of animals come to us from you, okay? From the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Can I?
Yeah, and there's no argument about that.
Okay.
However.
Can I stop you there? But there is a large amount of animals that come from other municipalities.
Yes.
We are going to be the highest amount, we realize that.
Exactly.
We also pay the highest amount, I mean, we're going to pay $86,500. Every municipality together is going to pay $39,140. So, I understand that we're the most. We're also paying double what all the other municipalities combined are.
Because of the expenses.
So, my question is...
Theirs don't cost what yours costs, they cost way less. Some of them cost less than the $91.
How do we know that?
Look at the numbers.
I'm, I'm... I'm looking at the sheet, I mean, I'm seeing their contract, you divide by the animals. I mean, all, it's just saying that Rapids stays longer, there's no time of stay that...
Okay, here, here's how you, I kind of had to look at it. No municipality is subsidizing any other municipality. Just so you know that. Wisconsin Rapids, no one. The Humane Society Board of Directors subsidizes all of you. And the reason for that is you don't pay 100% for this contract. You're paying, last year, you paid 18% of the total that we had to spend. But yet, you gave us basically 60, 70, whatever percent of the animals. We're subsidizing that. Not Grand Rapids, not any other one, we're subsidizing all of you. So, we're trying to make it fair.
It's not fair, and you just provided the data to see that. I mean, you can go through these and divide... Do you want me to read some of these numbers? I mean, the town of Grand Rapids pays $10,000, and they had 77 animals last year.
Correct.
So, they're paying half of what we're paying. How, how do I explain to, if you want to say it's not subsidizing, then what is it? We pay more than everybody.
Their animals don't cost us what your animals do. It's very simple, it's, you know, if, if you bring in, Wisconsin Rapids has a dog or a cat that costs us 500, 600, and theirs costs us 50, 90, should we make them pay 500? That's, that would be equal then, right? According to what you're saying, that's equal, because then we all pay the same.
See, that's the question I'm posing to you, is how are you going to make it an equal playing field? That we're not...
We feel this is equal, this is why we're, we're doing it. You say no, but it's pretty simple, and I guess part of this for me is when you, I would put it down to, when you buy a truck, do you tell the dealer you're paying 18%? What you contract with? I don't think so. Why is the Humane Society different? We're subsidizing you up to 70, what, 2%? And you don't like that, apparently. Because you're saying, well, the other ones don't pay that.
Right.
If they had the same costs as you do, then we would be billing them for that, but we don't. You get a blanket fee, okay? And you're not even covering half, nowhere nears it. What, I guess I, that's why I don't understand the problem, is saying, oh, what about somebody else?
Well, I would thi- I mean, you want to use the car dealership, for example. I would think if I go there and there's a cost for a vehicle, that's the cost for the vehicle.
Right.
Not if I'm from Saratoga, the vehicle's less than half of what it is if I come by from Wisconsin Rapids.
Well, then, you go by somewhere else, yes, but where are we going to go?
Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, you want to use these analogies and stuff, but we, you provided the data, we're paying more. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not proposing that we pay any less. What I'm proposing to you is you go to them and get them to pay more, and then you guys don't have to, you said that the Humane Society Board is subsidizing us or everyone by fundraising. You don't have to fundraise as much, or anything you do fundraise is above and beyond.
They have gotten a 30% cut increase.
But it's on, yeah, but that's not, that's still not where we're at. That's what's crazy about it, you guys increased it, and they're still not where we're at.
So, the other part of that as well is looking at for 2022. We ended up with 22 cats from City of Wisconsin Rapids from a hoarding case that we did not get paid for. Each cat from that hoarding case was roughly $500 per medical for that. So, where City of Wisconsin Rapids is not paying extra for those cats, the other townships, what we are working on is when we are forced to take in hoarding cases from those, they are getting billed the full amount for those hoarding case animals. Whereas City of Wisconsin Rapids is not getting billed the full amount for that. So, when it comes down to those, we are in the process that if situations like that pop up that we are required to take from them, they're responsible for the full cost of the animal, if that makes sense.
So, you're working on a new business model that would even it all out?
Yes.
That's, that's really what I'm working towards. I'm not talking about us bringing our number down.
Yep.
I'm talking generally, maybe you guys are looking at your business model and costing this out so that these other townships, villages, I mean, the list here...
Yes.
Are all paying what they should pay.
Yes.
Because I have a hard time explaining to a Wisconsin Rapids taxpayer, well, there's, might be some animals staying there longer, that's why we pay twice as much as everyone else surrounding us. And, and I, I mean, you'll get, if you get the funding, you get a year, and then you got all the time to talk to these neighboring municipalities and tell them, this is what it costs, this is what the even is. I mean, I don't know what you break that down to, a cost per animal, I mean, that's how I'm doing the math on here. And if you have a formula, you're going to add to that of length of stay. I guess that would make this easier to understand, but right now, it just doesn't. When I can break down that the village of Port Edwards had 22 animals in 2021, and they paid you guys $749.
No, and I agree. The 2022, when I had started as an ED and looked at the numbers, I was not happy with those, which is why we are in the process of increasing the rest of those. The 2023 looks a lot better than this, I just don't have the full year, so that was not something I wanted to be able to submit the full year for that. But again, for 2024, there's another increase for all those municipalities that should start to even out everything.
Start to.
Yes. We start, we started with small increases, because the other part is, again, a lot of these other municipalities are very small. So, doing a huge, large increase on them is a little bit on the harder side for that.
So, our taxpayers are supposed to wait so that their neighboring municipality taxpayers can catch up? I mean, they're doing the same thing we're doing, figuring out how to balance their budget, and we're, we're going to wait by while they figure out their end of it? I mean, I don't represent them. I either want them to get there, or I want us to come down to where they're at. And it's late in the year, but when you go negotiate these contracts next year, like I said, I'll still be here, I'm on a two-year term. I mean, that will be my expectation, you got the rest of the council here, but I'll be saying the same thing, so I hope it can just be a different conversation about what these guys pay. It's not necessarily about you guys, if they go and they say that they can't pay, well, that's the rate.
And just so you know, it's difficult, because the numbers that come in and out, like the animals and everything, are so different. And I'll just give you an example, City of Nacoussau was paying $7,000. With the animals they had, that came out to over 400, and animal they paid, a lot more than you paid. So, you could say, well, they were subsidizing everyone else also. Well, they dropped that contract and now went to a different fee, because their animals went down. They only had the 17. But we can never tell in a given year, we're trying to budget and figure it out, and I, I understand what you're saying. We're trying to make it fair, but...
Well, I mean, I think, I can't give any rec- well, I'll give a recommendation, but City of Nacoussau also had 44 animals in 2021, and I'm guessing they paid $7,000 or less. If you go off $7,000, they paid $159, if you break it down like that. I mean, my recommendation with them is perhaps rather than contract with Port Edwards for $749 for 22 animals in, in one year, and yeah, next year it goes down to 12, start charging them per animal. You can use us as your control point of what we cost, how many animals you take in, what we cost, because we're your biggest municipal funder. And then tell them, hey, the contract will just be this rate for this year based off of 2023 data. And then they can, they can pay as they go.
We can try that.
I think it'll ma- I think it'll help you guys a lot out on the funding end, and it takes care of this problem, too.
Believe me, I'm not a good...
Because do you really need a contract with the town of Seneca for four animals, town of Seago for one? Or do you just bill the municipality what the rate is? And the rate will change every year, because your costs go up, everything adjusts, animal fluctuation, as you stated. I think if you go off previous year data, and some of these villages and townships, their contract should simply be, if they have a small amount of animals, this is where you're going to get billed when it comes in, this is what the cost was. And the control point is us and what we pay with our large sum divided by animals. And if, I, you guys can make up your own ideas, too, but that would be more fair to me and make more sense, because when you look at these contracts and you do the math...
It would be nice if there was one, just one way with everyone, but it's, we'll try, we'll have to see what...
Well, I don't even, I mean...
Not more math, I guess.
But some of these townships, we're, we're your largest funder by twice as much as all of them added together. Some of these, I don't even know how it's beneficial to you guys to contract with them. You're not, you're paying way, way more for them as well. I mean, the town of, the town of Port Edwards, 2020, 22 animals in 2021, $749?
Yes.
Certainly paying...
I don't disagree with...
Yeah, I, I would just, I would hold them more accountable and say, this is what the ant, per animal rate is, and you don't have to predict the future of what the year's going to be. You can just say that's what you're going to get billed for the year. Here's the control number, it changes every year, and that's, that's what we'll bill you. I think that would be a much better system for the citizens of Rapids, and especially the Humane Society, because I think it'll help with your funding a lot. So, it's just an idea, but we got to get to something like that, so every year when we come back here, it doesn't seem like, wow, we're paying a lot more. Because I don't know whose animals are staying and who aren't. And if, even if you guys were to tally, tally that and keep that data, that's a lot of data.
That's something we can do.
Let's go and move on to Jay.
Oh. I'm just going to throw a question out there. So, and I apologize, I was going to check with Sue. I think the other day, you, you mentioned that by statute, we have to provide this as a service to the community. That being said, if we were to take this service on and provide it for ourselves, you're looking at minimum one employee at $100,000 a building. You're going to have all the bills that, that the Humane Society has with vets, food, you can go right down the list. And quite honestly, if you look at it that way, we're getting a pretty good deal. So, I'm just throwing that out there, and I think maybe Patrick can share a little bit on the state statute part of this, but I know it's something to think about.
Patrick?
First, let me ask you some questions about the documents that you sent over. We aren't talking about only strays, correct?
Yes, this is only strays. No surrenders are a part of this, this is only strays.
If we're talking about strays, why are rats and rabbits listed? Those sound to me more like pets or surrenders. Don't they dwell inherently in nature?
Yes, so when you start looking at strays of rabbits and rats, they are domesticated. We're not taking in wildlife. I have had rabbits for years, I know what they are, they are domestic rabbits. It's not like they're wilds or anything like that, they are dumped pets that are domesticated. Wild rabbits are just typical, the great cottontails or whatever. The rabbits we have been receiving in are mini lapps, holland lapps, mini rexes. Those are domesticated breed rabbits, they're not supposed to live outside. And then the same with the rat, it was a domesticated rat, and it was found at a business.
Okay, so when a, when a stray is a dog or a cat strays from home and it's picked up, is there a fee to the owner from you?
Yes.
I, I would have just added, with some of the new stuff now, we've also get ball pythons, ball of the pythons.
There was a ball python three weeks ago, I had a bearded dragon a couple of weeks ago, so we are getting more exotics as well. It's not just the basic dogs and cats nowadays, people are starting to dump strays, and we're getting a lot more exotics than we have in the past. City of Wisconsin Rapids, this year, I've had three ferrets in the last couple of weeks, as well as the snake, bearded dragon. We've been getting a lot more of that as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the council. So, over the past day or so, I've been... Okay, at first, I was thinking I was on board with Jake's idea. Hey, let's get everybody else to pay that. So, what I did was I put together a list of municipalities that are close to our size and see what they did. And what I found is that there is no municipality paying even half of what we are paying our Humane Society. Cote d'Haize, the proposed budget is $40,750. I couldn't find out if they had a pound or if they had other means with them. I did talk to most of these places. City of Anago...
You turn the mic...
Sorry.
Yeah, thanks.
City of Anago is $39,710, and they have a city pound. So, when they come to us and try to scare us by saying, oh, it's going to be $250,000 surveys, you guys are getting a screaming deal, they're doing their part, because they're standing up for their business. We have to do our part and stand up for the residents. Germantown, they pay the Humane Society an average of the last two years for the animals. Their 2024 budget is $2,000. This includes 31 and 1/2 cats, eight wild animals, and five others that were trapped. That's an average of $44.95 per animal. I mean, we have to be fair to the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids, and we have to look out for their interest. And I would, if we added up the numbers that they had given us with the surrounding municipalities, for 2022, that would have been $18,834.98. So, I say that we should pay what other municipalities pay. I'm going to make a motion to contract with Southwood County Humane Society in the amount of $26,250. This will cover up to 350 stray animals picked up or dropped off from the city. City will not accept responsibility for any animal except dogs and cats.
Is there any further discussion then on that?
Kind of a little broader here, but with Dennis sitting here, you know, I think this highlights the problem with the system in general. You know, we pick, we pick up about 20% of the tax levy for the county, and sometimes I'm always concerned, are we getting a value back for that 20%? And I, I really believe this really should be a county-funded, county-operated system here, because we're all paying, every citizen's paying into the county budget. And it really should be funding and taking care of the funding of the Humane Society. And then it's proportional. Thank you.
I know there's a motion out there, but further discussion, I'm still kind of concerned about their budget. I, I didn't remember we were prepared for it. I have a couple of questions on the budget itself. I'm looking at, can you answer to the fundraising expense of 2020? Yet, there's a lot of even numbers here, so I, it must be estimates, but $15,000, actual 2020 of fun, for fundraising. In 2021, your actual was $7,800. In 2022, your actual was $8,000. And in 2023, your budget in 15, and you're asking for $15,450. So, I'm just wondering what those, what those fundraising expenses are, and what, what is your expense on fundraising?
What the expenses are, you're talking?
Yeah, you budgeted expenses for fundraising. So, I'm wondering, those numbers are all over the place. So, and you're at $15,020, then you dropped $7,821, $8,022, and you went back to $15,023. Now, we had given a higher number to you in '23 per dollar wise, so... But so, what, what expenses do you incur in the fundraising, I guess?
Yeah, so at least for 2021, 2021 and 2022, we had actually lost two of our largest, like, fundraising opportunities that we had. We used to have a Christmas bazaar, and then we used to have a food cook-off in a sort. Those were before my time.
Iron Chef.
Iron Chef. Both of those events were cut, sadly, our person who did our Iron Chef passed away, and then the Christmas bazaar ended up becoming too much with labor to continue to do it for what the dollar was actually raising us. So, our expenses went down in those two years. With 2023 and 2024, we did add a lot more of those fundraising opportunities. So, when it comes down to our expenses for those, we're looking at advertising, printing costs, posters, having to pick up supplies. So, if we can't get it donated, then we are looking at potentially having to purchase those extra costs. So, that's what our fundraising budget and why it went down and why it went back up.
And one more question on budget, too, just to get an idea. On vet expense, there was a big drop from 20, 20 was 40, actual was $44,000. 21 went down to $30,000, and then 50, in '22, it went back up to 56. And now you're billing, or ask, or 55 was budgeted, and so you're at 56. So, what's the, what happened in '21?
Yeah, so we used to have a couple of vets that were able to donate their time and come to the building to provide those surgeries for us at a very low rate for us. We had two different vets that were in the building, able to come in, do surgeries at the building, so we weren't incurring extra spending costs, is driving, that kind of thing. Since then, we have lost both of those, both of those vets due to the fact that they need to maintain their practice and do not have the time and availability to donate that time to come to us. So, our costs have gone up due to the fact that we are driving every single animal to spay and neuter appointments, and we don't have vets that are able to come to the building anymore.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion then? So, we have a motion on the floor, I'm sorry, Patrick, it was pretty long, why don't you repeat it?
Motion to contract with Southwood County Humane Society in the amount of $26,250. This will cover up to 350 strays picked up or dropped off from the city. City will only accept responsibility for cats and dogs.
That's our motion, and, and a second to contract for 26, the number? All those in favor? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
We could do a roll call.
Pardon? I didn't... So let's do a show of hands again. I'm sorry. So all of those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Four in favor and all those opposed. Three, yep, that's three, so the motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know what Ryan's going to vote, but I assume it's going to probably come to a tie. And most likely, I'll be voting no, just kind of putting that out there. I just think that, you know, outside of Madison's doing a great job and I think they...
Oh, absolutely.
They have a very, a big mission over there. I don't understand what your math is, Patrick, you know, when we compare it to like Grand Rapids and... And so at this point, I wouldn't be in favor of that motion. But we can talk later too.
And I'm fine with explaining the math too.
Yeah, and we could talk after.
Sure.
Because my vote right here doesn't matter. I'm just putting it out there.
With Ryan not here. Okay, so we'll discuss this at budget then. What do you mean with Brian not being here?
Well, because if he would be voting too, it might come down to a tie because Ryan Austin's not here to vote. And then when it comes to the budget. But I'm, my vote doesn't count right now, so I'm just putting it out there though.
Matt just asked if I wanted to, it's too late to table because we voted. Is it too late to table this?
The budget isn't finalized, so this isn't finalized, so it gives you time to speak to your board about what the motion that passed and you to come back with another offer or just be here at budget time. So it's, it's a...
Okay, I'm...
Committee of the whole hearing like this, it has to move to common council before it's finalized.
For a full vote.
So if you have a counter offer during that time, that would be the time to bring it. Or you can just come speak on your beliefs on what the motion was.
Okay, can I...
What's the date for that? And what time?
Well, first of all, we have a public hearing on the budget on November ninth. Is that correct? Is that Thursday, November ninth? And then we have, that's the public hearing and then at the November fourteenth, council meeting is when the budget will be considered for adoption.
And this motion would be part of that? Or is, with the motion passed now, that's, I guess, your offer, right, or?
That's basically the number that would go into the budget, but the budget review would go again, in theory.
Yeah. Okay, so now it's up, I have to go back to the board and say, do you accept this or not?
No.
And then, right?
If I got the, if I got the number right, it's twenty-six thousand something instead of the... Eighty-six or whatever. That's what's going to be in, I guess, our budget. And you can come back, I guess, and present us something different or at budget time, when we go over all of these, we can approve the eighty-six. So you somewhat, I guess, as I look at it, you got a straw poll.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it was, it was a vote, it was a vote.
Okay.
But the entire budget will be acted on later at a future date. And that future, the budget, when we decide what it is, with the, Tim will have a, if we make him do it, he's going to have to change numbers and everything else. But we can come up with whatever we want, as long as we've got the money to pay for it. And that's a big thing we're still missing on doing. We're missing somewhat in this discussion, I think, or I'm missing it, of talking apples to apples and not tulips to dinosaurs. It may end up with twenty-six thousand. I hope not. Because if we're getting down to nickel and diamond, I've been here in a long time and I can tell you how we nickel and dime at times when people got upset with such things as Christmas decorations, things hanging from the light poles, several others. I sit here during this and don't say a whole lot. I try to gather the information as it comes out. I guess a saying that I use quite often, that I don't like to, not because it's, that it shouldn't be said in public, but at some point in time, people, we have to get real. We have a budget that we're working on. We know where this is taking us. And we have to get down to the real. Are we going to really be real? Or what are we doing with that two million dollars? That's not you guys, but it's part of the budget or not part of it.
I didn't do anything.
I would like you, Tim, if you could just tell us, again, as you did the other night, if we didn't, if we didn't do this, what will you have to do? If we did not participate?
That's a good question. But, all right, I'll answer that one first. Let's say, I can kind of tell you with the proposal here, I didn't get it all. I heard the twenty-six, two-fifty, and then the second part was something about three hundred for strays? And only dogs and cats? Okay, so then that's per animal, the three hundred thing, right? Or what? I guess I don't... Oh, we get three hundred, okay. The three hundred and fifty animals, I get it. That's the part I was confused on. I thought that was your doing some money part thing, but, okay. I think I can kind of speak for the board for one, that we are going to face the alternative because I can't go back to the board and say, drop that and we have to fundraise that when we just, our expenses are going out the roof. We just approved a raise. We're paying six dollars less than McDonald's. We can't get workers. You try to, try to compete with that. This is unreal. And what the mayor said, yeah, the county says, your problem, you fix it. Which that, we get nothing, which is wrong. I know your comparisons go up to Oneida County. Rhinelander and Oneida County pay the full vote for their service, which is about twenty percent. I just talked to the secretary there or the treasurer.
I actually talked with both Rhinelander and Oneida County Humane Society.
But I mean, it's, as Mr. Rehm said, this is not apples to apples, oranges to oranges. You can't, there's so many variables here. But what would happen would be is if we can't, I guess if we don't come to an agreement, let's put it that way, you're on your own then. You are free to do as you wish, just as we are. And you still have to provide for all those animals somehow. The strays, you know, and that's going to be billing a facility or contract with somebody else. And I'm going to tell you, you want to contract with somebody else? You're not paying only eighteen percent of their budget. You're going to be paying more than a hundred because they're going to want to make a profit. We are nonprofit. We don't make a penny and we have to scrape by trying to come up with this through our, our board raising funds. So if you cut us by, what, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, they're not going to go for it. I can tell you that right now. That's, that's too, where are we going to make that up? We have a hard time if we got to get ten thousand. That's like running more fundraisers and we can't run them. But for you, let's say, if you want to contract with someone else, contract with Maps maybe or Marshfield, then you have to drive all your animals up there or, I don't know. Find a place here that'll do it. And then you're going to have to have a vet because there are, our state law is requiring what needs to be done. And these medications and shots and all this other stuff, that's the cost. And when we keep an animal, that is why we're paying so much. Because then every month they need another shot. Every month they need this. You get their food. Three of your cats, we're paying two thousand dollars for food. We are, not you. You going to pay for that? How, what are you going to tell the citizens? Well, we funded the lowballed them and they didn't take it, so now you're on the hook for about a quarter million dollars. That would be my guess, about a quarter million it's going to cost you to get your own shelter, if you can. And then good luck finding a vet because you're, who is, who in the city is going to transport your animals to Washington County for spay and neuter? Or are you going to run out to Clark County to do it? The only other option, I believe, I just found out you can go up to Merrill. So those costs and that stuff, you're going to have to get a van or some type of transport vehicle. You're going to have to get staff. And if you think you're going to pay your staff nine dollars an hour out of city wages with a union, I can tell you right now, you're looking at fifteen to twenty bucks an hour, double. So your, your salaries to run this is probably going to cost you the two-hundred-some thousand alone. Now find food. And you're not going to get donations. People aren't going to go, we feel sorry for the city. We'll give them some blankets and we'll give them food. We'll give them this. That's not going to happen and you know it's not going to happen. That's kind of what you're looking at. So it's, I don't want it to be ARB. I don't want this confrontational. These are our numbers. This is what it costs us and we're scraping by, trying to do the best we can. It's a board of volunteers just like you. We don't get paid, nothing. We try to figure out, how are we going to take care of animals? This is the best way we know how. And I honestly don't think, out of our total budget, when you take all the other numbers, with the eighty-six thousand, you're paying eighteen percent of what it costs us to run that shelter. Eighteen percent. And that, all the services you get from us. And we voluntarily say, yes, we'll cover seventy-two percent for you. And that, now you're saying, no, that's too much. Should we just pay the whole thing or what? Or I, I guess I don't understand this. And then comparing it to other municipalities, I get the point and I understand. You're stewards of the taxpayers' money. I'm a taxpayer too and I live in Wisconsin Rapids. And off my post as my job, if I would hear about this, I would say, I would be calling my alderperson and going, what is wrong with you? What is going on here? These animals need to, but what do you want to do? Shoot them? euthanize them? I heard that's some comment. We could just euthanize them. We're not going to do that. And for us, to be honest, if the city of Wisconsin Rapids says, no, we're going to do it on our own, Humane Society survives, okay? The money that we get from the other people and what we have to do, we lose, what, seventy percent of the animals that we don't take care of. So people are going to be out of a job, but, okay, I guess. But we can take care of that very easy. But the burden will be on you as a council. You're going to have to figure out, where are you going to put four hundred-some animals a year? All I could say is good luck. We run it and it's difficult. I can tell you that right now.
Your honor.
Sorry, and for all those reasons is why I, I can't support this because there's no way, we're arguing over paying more for a code enforcement officer now to set up a whole animal operation here. It's not going to happen. But I do have a couple, so if, reading through and, I'm sorry, I wasn't here Tuesday, but what does it meant when they say no cats? So if somebody says, Madison, if somebody says, you can't take in our cat, what do you do with them?
Do you... So we're not able to accept cats from a couple of those townships. So the ones that state we can't take cats, we don't take them. So if a person finds a cat in that township, we refer them to their town chair. The town chair is responsible then for figuring out what to do with that cat. Ninety percent of the time, they shoot those cats. They are not coming into us. But when it comes down to like feral barn cats and things like that, we're not taking those into the building. They, we provide a service on our own time, on our own dime to go out, trap those animals, get them spayed and neutered so that they're not continuing to reproduce and we're not ending up with so many kittens. The numbers, at least from what I have seen with our kitten intakes, have gone down because we are providing that TNR service on our own dime to be able to, we're not having feral cats running through your townships, municipalities. We're assisting with getting them fixed on our own dime. But the ones that state we can't have animals are specific, they most of the time end up shooting those animals.
Okay, I just wanted to turn, yeah, I think that feral cat program's a very good program. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think you explained it very well with the services that you cover and everything else. This is something that the city needs. I mean, this is your contract that you're offering us. Be nice to see it a little bit less, but I understand what you're saying. And I, I think Autumn Rehman hit the nail on the head also, but, I mean, the real world, this is what the cost is and because I, if, if the city or if you refuse to accept any offer from the city, I don't know exactly where the city would go with it. I guess we'd have to figure out how to budget it, but, but thank you for, for everything. You're welcome.
We voted. We voted. Well, we did vote.
I also, I believe that we, the vote was taken here in what to do. Throwing out some comments afterwards, I guess, rightfully or wrongly. I guess you did hear that the council has spoken of what they're going to include in their budget. I hate to say it, but as far as I'm concerned, I think your presentation and the discussion tonight has ended. And I also said, is that when it gets to the budget floor, it's probably going to be at least somehow to try to put that fifty-some thousand back into it. And I can't promise that that will succeed. But we can talk here, I guess, all we want. But the motion was made, the motion was taken and you, you heard what it was. And that's where we're at. So with no disrespect, I believe, I believe, I believe our, our discussion on this has ended.
Pardon?
And our discussion on this tonight has ended. And we need to move on to the next department as we have several left. And we need to move on to the next department as we have several left. And I just hope, and I just hope that if people have the same thoughts, they get in, they raise the same questions on these other ones. And also with this, to keep in mind what will happen if we don't have the humane society for us to rely on. So, as far as I'm concerned, good evening and enjoy it if you can. Thank you.
Okay. So we're just supposed to show up to the mayor? Do you want a formal response from our board or what? Or it's not really, that's the part I'm confused at. You have the motion and
At budget, we will still discuss the budget again.
So, okay, so we'll come back again?
They don't have to come back with a counteroff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I do appreciate, by the way, your explanation after the vote was a lot more than I knew before the vote and I wish, I wish I'd have known that. There was a lot that you brought up there, wasn't it? So I think there will be some reconsideration at the, at least by my part, it will be, so, thank you.
I didn't mean to get serious.
No, no, no.
To do too, but my passion is the animals.
Tyler, information technology, please.
All right. You want me to just kick this off or do you guys have any questions for me to start out? We'll kick it off then. Staffing remains the same. We're going to remain an army of three. Our operating budget, really, everything's pretty flat. The only thing that has increased is GIS licensing, which was, that's just the cost of the software going up. I did have a small increase in a Munis hardware fund. That is just for our hardware that holds off the financial software that we have. We weren't budgeting for that replacement. That will be needing, are needing to be replaced in the next two years. So we're just putting a few dollars away for that. You know, some of the, some of the things we're doing this year, again, we're replacing hardware. We have a virtual server host that we'll be replacing in 2024. There is one discrepancy that I do want to call out that I believe we made a change in after these were sent. We did have fifteen thousand in software that I am, that we decided wasn't needed at this time. And then also, we were able to replace the SAN in this year's budget. So that, that cost will be, or that, that project will be done this year. Any questions on IT? Because I also have community media, which is kind of the same story, pretty flat. Okay, community media. Still same, same staffing level is the same. Operating expenses, again, we left using the same numbers as 2023. The only increase is in our equipment replacement. We've just, we've been noticing that we've been using that amount. So we did bump that up by a couple of thousand dollars. Again, pretty, pretty much carbon copy from 23 to 24 for community media.
Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Jake.
I don't have a question in particular about any item on your budget. None of them are itemized as security. But since we don't get you off, and can you talk about our security? Because it seems large organizations and governments are being compromised. Where in, is that our network software licensing that we're paying towards or what are we paying towards security?
Yep, some of that, some of the softwares that we already use is under, yeah, that would be network software, correct? Really, you know, some of the things that we've been doing is covered with, under hardware as well. So we've replaced, you know, outdated equipment. And then also through, just through software that we already use or, for example, like all of our Microsoft products, we have two-factor authentication for. So we've kind of, you know, through the last year, have set up two-factor authentication for remote access, VPN, all of our, all of our Microsoft accounts. And then for the IT side, basically every account that we log into. So, you know, I've got a dozen accounts that requires two-factor authentication. So that's some of the security side of it. We, you know, I say this to Mayor Blazer a lot. We could spend a quarter million dollars a year just specifically on security and the next day be hacked. I mean, we see large corporations, like you acknowledged, get hacked all the time. And it's a matter of, you know, there's a hundred different ways that it can happen. So we're trying to, you know, we do our best with informing our end users, making sure all of our, all of our security settings are up to date, that we're patched. You know, we do the best that we can with what we're allotted. So, does that answer your question to some extent?
I don't know if it answered it comfortably.
Yeah.
The best that you can with what you're allotted? Are we, are we secure or where?
That's a, that's a really hard question to answer. You know, like I said, the, there's some large security oriented companies that have just been hacked recently. You know, it's, there's never a, I guess, a silver bullet to say, hey, this is a foolproof plan, right? There's always, there's something, or there could be a new vulnerability tomorrow that gets released that makes half the planet, you know, vulnerable until they patch. So are we secure compared to other municipalities? I think so, I would say so, yes. Are we secure versus the FBI? No, we're not.
Right.
So it's a, it's a measure, you know, kind of a give take, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Tyler and I talk about this all the time and I always ask him if the Russians are attacking because anytime, because rightly so, we are, we are attacked often and those attacks are thwarted. So, you know, I think that he's doing a great job and, you know, and as things come about, he responds pretty quickly to that. But, but yeah, I ask him all the time. Kind of a running joke, to be honest.
And to, kind of now that I'm thinking too, you know, within the last couple of years, through our, and Tim can speak to who it is, Tokyo Marine or, is that a? Yeah, our cyber insurance, they actually do some proactive scans and audits for us. So we're kind of, you know, going through the checklist and making sure the two-factor stuff we were required to do in order to keep our cyber insurance at a reasonable rate. So there are some things that we're, we're being asked to do from their standpoint to ensure that we're as secure as we can be here at the city, so.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to take a quick break and then we're going to change the schedule real quick. I just have to run to the bathroom and we're going to go, we're going to move to WWLC. So give us, take like three minutes and five minutes.
My name is Jim Brown. I am a Wisconsin Rapids resident and the general manager of Water and Light. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff here in a minute or so to do the heavy lifting on the budget. But just in basics, there are no, at this time, rate increases built into the budget for next year. We recently implemented a electric rate increase in October of this year. And it had been three or four years prior to that for the last one. Just on a general business sense, I think it's like the rest of the industry is only more exaggerated. We ordered a line truck in 2021 and we still don't have it. Basically, all of our materials are costing roughly fifty to seventy percent more than they did before the pandemic and the price has not let up. We can't get transformers, we can't get electric meters. We're down to our last thirty electric meters and it's, it's not only us, it's utilities all over the state that can't get the high-tech meters, basically. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Jeff to do the heavy lifting and we'll stay here as long as you want to answer any questions that you might have regarding the budget. And our chair of our commission is also here, Don Bergen.
All right, thank you. Does everyone have a copy? I know we sent this out a couple of weeks ago, just to make sure everyone has a copy. The copy that you have was reviewed and approved by the Water and Light Commission on October 11th. It might look a little different than the stuff you're getting from the city right now and that's because of some of the many regulations we have with the Public Service Commission. We have to follow activity-based accrual accounting. So you're not seeing it the same way, it's how we're required to do our accounting. So if you've got questions on things as we go through, you know, definitely we'll answer those questions. Two parts of the budget, about the first, two-thirds of the document is our capital spend. We detail out for 2024 and then we have a five-year plan, kind of, it gets a little more fuzzy the further you go out. But at least in 2024, that's the budget that was figured out. And then the last third is our operations and maintenance budget. So kind of the day-to-day activities that occur and kind of keep the lights on, so to say. So if we look at capital projects, those are projects that are going to benefit the utility for more than a year, cost more than twenty-five hundred dollars. The utility recoups those costs through depreciation. So we depreciate those over their estimated useful life. That comes in to as an operating expense and then that's how those rates are set to kind of continue to replace those assets as we go through the years. Page four of the budget kind of gives you a real high-level overview of where we're anticipating our capital spend to be in 2024. So if you look, total spend is about 5.9 million dollars, down about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from 2023. And like Jim said, you can see the last couple of years for the electric capital projects are over four million dollars. A lot of that has to do with increased costs for materials and transformers, just where the business is right now. The next ten pages really deal, go into the details underwater, electric, our IT department and kind of common. So projects that don't fit in one of those buckets. Kind of go through the 2024 projects we have planned and also gives you an explanation of why we're doing that. Any questions on any of the capital spend that's in there?
Okay. I did have a lot of questions, just going line item by line item. They don't seem very, they seem pretty rounded off to like the nearest fifty thousand or ten thousand. They're not real specific.
So a lot of times, like if we look at the first project, electric additions and directional boring, so that's going to be all the projects that happen throughout the year. There's projects we don't know are going to happen. Poles could fall down, things could happen that need to be replaced. Historically, that's always just been a round number because we don't have all of 2024's projects budgeted now.
Does it tell you how many feet? Like that would be a good information to have, like how many feet are you boring for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Sure, I mean, the one project, when you're talking about underground conversion, so we've got the one project here for four hundred and fifty thousand. That's going to deal with the airport two-mile area. That was an area that got really hard-hit in 2019 when we had the big storm hit the town. That's about a hundred customers. It's about, I think it's about an eight-block area that they're going to be boring. And it takes twenty-nine transformers to do that area. I guess other than that, typically with the electric addition, so going back to your first one, they're pretty much going to do the projects that need to be done, work between the electric superintendent, the engineer and then Jim, the general manager, to kind of make sure that those projects need to be done, are there for a reason and kind of stay within that budget number.
So with these budget numbers, you do have them rounded off. What happens when you fall under budget? What happens with that additional money?
So with the utility, it's not like we're taking a levy every year and saying, you know, the money needs to be funded within this year. So any excess revenues go into what we call depreciation funds and can be used for future, future years' projects. So water is a good example, coming up, starting in 2028, we're going to have to do meter replacements. That's probably going to be a four to five million dollar project over several years. You can see the, it's starting to show in 2028 for a million dollars. PSC requires every twenty years, we replace all the meters in the system. So we try to have these, this earnings available so we don't have to borrow. We haven't had to borrow in the last fifteen years for capital projects. So we can do the capital projects with the operations money that the utility earns.
So it's not by, like any design or anything like that? Because I see on some places, you do list how many feet it is. But on others, it's like, hey, we want eight hundred thousand dollars for this. But it doesn't tell you anything what you're getting.
And I guess what I would tell you is basically that that line item is going to be used until it's gone. If it gets to that point and it's not going to go, the budget's not going to be over. So they know they have eight hundred thousand dollars to replace bad utility poles in the system. So an average pole probably costs installed is somewhere around four thousand dollars. So that means they can do two hundred poles with that project. So when they get to that point, then they know that project needs to cease.
Thank you, I'm done for now.
Okay. No other questions on the capital? I just want to go into the operations. You know, as Jim mentioned, we don't have any planned new positions in the budget. It stays the same at forty-four employees. And the numbers to look at when we're talking about utility revenue, you're looking at a rate of return on your net assets. So when we go through a rate case, the PSC, when they set our rates, they're taking a look at test year expenditures to say, you need to cover these test year expenditures. So they build the revenue to do that and then say you can earn a rate of return on your assets. And that whole idea of the rate of return on assets is so you can continue to invest in your system and not have to take debt out. So in 2023, the rate case we just had completed, that rate of return was set at six percent. So they looked at our average assets and they said, okay, we're going to build these rates so you have enough money to cover your expenditures and can earn six percent on those assets. So you can see in 2024, on page seventeen, we're looking at about a 4.97% rate of return is our estimate or about a 1.972 million dollar operating income. And again, that's the money that gets put back into the system so we can fund those capital projects we just talked about a couple of minutes ago. The next couple of pages, you can see, we go through the electric revenues and expenditures, go through those numbers and, again, this is where I said, we're doing activity-based accrual accounting. So the categories, you don't see labor, you don't see supplies, you don't see transportation costs. so the, the categories, you don't see labor, you don't see supplies, you don't see transportation costs. All those items roll up into the different accounts that are there. Then behind that, you have those different activities, so we know, you know, how much of each one of those costs, which activities are doing that, but the point of that is, so you can compare utility against utility. If somebody contracts out tree trimming work like we do, and somebody does it internally, all those costs go to the same bucket, so you can understand that maintenance of overhead line costs X amount for a, for a system. And that's why they do it that way. The other page I just wanted to bring to your attention, page twenty-one, is the same calculation for the water utility. Again, it's been a couple of years since we've had a full water rate case. Um, and there's also some one-time charges in 2024 for the water budget, but you can see that rate of return planned for 2024 is about two-point-one-two percent. The authorized rate of return when they set the rates was five-point-six percent. There's some maintenance work that needs to be done at the plant, that's kind of bringing that number down a little bit. If we weren't doing some of those projects, it would be closer to the 2023 number, that was about three-point-six percent. And following those couple of pages, again, are the, the revenues and expenditures that are planned for the water utility. I guess at that point, we'll open it up for additional questions.
Better.
Okay, who's legally responsible for the quality and character of the operations of Waterworks and Lighting?
Say that again? Probably me.
Okay, that's not correct. It's either the council or commission. Who would you say is responsible for the?
Say that they're more of an oversight.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Our commission probably spent four and a half hours on our budget in a day. Legally responsible for what?
Uh, how Waterworks and Lighting is operated.
It's a combination of the council, my commission, and myself, and our team at Water and Light. I would put our numbers up against anybody in the state. We're third, twenty-eighth lowest residential electric rates, we're right in the middle on water, and our water treatment costs are higher than the municipals near us. And our reliability rate is one of the best in the country, because we spent forty-seven million dollars on the system since I got the town fifteen years ago.
I understand that. I'm trying to establish what our relationship is between the commission, the council, and what you guys do.
Okay. You have a council representative on our commission, and you're the owner of Water and Light, and you receive a very large pilot payment each year, um, in lieu of tax as a benefit. If you wanna be more involved in what's going on, you're, you're more than welcome.
Oh, we're definitely involved. So the council has responsibility for the commission, for oversight of the commission, um, through ordinances. So Water and Light, they follow the ordinances, is that your general understanding?
Yes, I would say that. I would agree.
Okay, um, why does council never get the budget in the prescribed manner?
You mean by October first?
Yeah, before October first, is what it says.
I guess it hasn't been requested at that time. Part of it has to do with when our commission can get together to review it. Part of it has to do with, um, the, the numbers we use. We don't have timely fashion to have it completed, done, and reviewed, and to council by October first, under the current method that we use.
We're also supposed to get, uh, semi-annual reports?
You get those monthly in our, in the packets, you get our financial statements.
Through the, through?
Through our packets that get delivered, I believe they get monthly packets that get delivered with council people?
What we get is we get a summary, we don't, we don't get anything.
You should get our packet, don't you?
Not to my knowledge.
I, oh, okay, I'll double-check with that, but I was under the understanding that?
So I, I think we do, Jeff, we do get a packet, it's the, it's the minutes, our agenda are the minutes. But I can tell you this, um, just because I don't have Water and Light's iPad, I don't always get the financials that you provide at each, at each meeting.
Financials should be included in that, so I will double-check with that.
It's a different, it's a whole different issue that.
Okay.
I mean, for, for me and this computer, but.
Okay, I will verify that, but it was my understanding you're receiving those monthly.
Okay, so every year we have, uh, water main line construction and stuff like that. Is there actual construction of water mains and extensions being done?
Uh, they are done by Public Works.
Okay, because according to our ordinance, it says that it should be oversought by the Public Works Committee.
I would assume when they approve the, the projects that that's included with the water main construction.
Yeah, I mean, as far as what, um, because we, we do the water main installation, so, uh, as part of, I, I do believe Joe Eichstein, when he goes through what the upcoming projects are, that includes the water main, plus, um, we have those projects in the Public Works Construction Fund budget.
Might wanna re, uh, take a look at that ordinance that we have, and maybe reword it. So the reasons for my questions is, whenever a new business or prospective business moves into the city, I mean, there's a few things that they look at, a few key things that they look at. They look at taxes, and our taxes are ridiculous. They're super high in the city. But another thing is utilities. What can we do to lower the utility costs?
Uh, like, like Jim mentioned before, we are the, the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth lowest in the state for residential, uh, rates. We do, every year, we do compare ourselves both nationally and regionally in, in the state to see what our rates are. We don't have a large industrial load in Wisconsin Rapids, and that's probably our detriment, for our industrial rates are not as favorable as they could be, but that goes back to the Public Service Commission saying fairness for rate payers. You need to ensure the business or the customer classes that are using those services are paying for those services. So if we had more industrial load, those rates would be more attractive.
Okay. Is it cheaper to bury the lines when the road is dug up? Or does it cost the same to bury the power lines?
It's more expensive to put lines in the ground, because you put them in conduit. And it's typically more expensive to bury lines than it would be to put them overhead.
That makes sense.
It's also, um, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Also, if there was an issue with the, with the lines, it's, it's easier to troubleshoot, obviously, if it's above ground. You can see where the problem is, where if it's underground, it takes a lot longer to find where that fault may lie.
Yeah, and when you were here a few years ago, I had asked about that, and, uh, Jim had responded that you guys always keep an eye on the, um, city projects to, to see. We just finished the Oak Street project, why weren't those lines buried? I mean, it was almost a mile-long project there.
One of the things, when, when, um, when utilities, electric utilities go underground, there's a cost to the homeowner at that point, because they need to change their service from above ground with a mast on their house to underground, and then have the coming up that way. So there's a lot of cost to homeowners, um, that may not wanna do that at the time. And I think in Oak Street, the, um, lines are in the lot lines behind the houses. I don't know if those were on Oak Street or not. But, I mean, that being said, when we do decide to bury lines, um, when it's like, we just did the MedCaf subdivision a couple of years ago. And not everybody decides to do it because of that additional cost. That's the customer's responsibility to change their house, take the mast off their house, and then go up and have the underground service, the, the new meter pedestal put in for them.
Is there any way that we could cover those costs through some, some sort of fund sharing?
It, it goes back again to the Public Service Commission's, you know, cost, cause, or pays, and then you're cross-subsidizing other people, paying for some people to have those, that piece to them. So, um, I don't know if they would, we've never asked the question, I don't know if Public Service Commission would allow those costs to be included in future rate cases if they're not following that principle.
I just have one more question, oh, two more questions, actually. Last year you had added a line called donation. What is that donation, where does it go?
Um, that, we used to have a program for bottled water, um, for our community, so we used to have bottled water. We'd allow nonprofits to sell that water, um, at events, so they could make money that way. That cost the utility a lot of money, it was a labor to get, I think we took it up to Shawno to get it bottled, and it was just, it was very expensive. So what the commission decided to do was to have a pool of money that can be donated to these, these nonprofits that would typically come asking for water, so we'll give them a hundred or two hundred dollars to, in lieu of giving them ten cases of water that they can sell. It's kind of a win-win, it saves us money, they get the money they need, and it's been working out okay.
Okay. I actually have two more questions, I'm sorry. The, um, how many employees is employed there?
Uh, forty-four.
Forty-four total?
Forty-four total. That's with water and electric.
Okay, last year, uh, Alderman Evanson, she voted no, because there was a, uh, cost of living increase of five percent. Can you tell me what the cost of living increase for this year was?
Sure. We really don't, the utility related doesn't budget a cost of living increase. When the commission, the commission makes these decisions in December, and they'll take a look at inflationary pressures, they'll take a look at market-based adjustments. So we'll do, like, a mini-compensation study every year, and we'll take a look at our comparables. There might be people underpaid in their position, they might be people that are more comparable with market. But the number we used in our budget is four percent, um, overall. Now, that's not saying everybody's getting a four percent increase, it's just a spot, it's an allotment within here. Taking a look at Consumer Price Index, I mean, you guys were talking about that on Tuesday with the rates, so that's went up. Um, and they'll make those decisions in, in December, what that overall amount is. And just keep in, in mind too, this, it's, we're not, like, levying, this would not affect the rates. If the commission decides three percent, four percent, two percent, whatever the commission decides, that's not increasing rates in 2024. And with, uh, my opinion is, you know, you've got some highly skilled, some people that take training, five years to get a lineman up to be a journeyman lineman, to lose someone over a percent, and then have five years of training and hundreds of thousands of dollars to get that person back up to, to speed, um, so they can work on their own on the lines, is, is, uh, not a good thing. And it's, um, if you look again too, when you look at, um, the utility, for the electric utility, labor is about five percent of total operations costs. Power supply costs are a lot bigger cost to the utility, it's about thirty-five percent for water. So again, it's a little bit different than, than the, uh, the typical model that you're seeing with the city government, where it's a lot higher, um, labor rates, or your percentage of costs are labor. It's a lot less with the utilities.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jay?
Jim, could you go, you, you spoke to, and it was kind of quick, but I, I think it's really good to point out again how we stack up on our water and electric rates, and, and because everyone's, oh, our rates are always so high, but I think clearly they're not the highest, and.
No, residentially, we are the twenty-ninth lowest out of one hundred utilities in the state that are operating. Uh, that's eighty-two municipals, five IOUs, and a bunch of co-ops. On the water side, we're, are right, we base our rates on just Portage County. We compare ourselves to all of the rest of the utilities in Portage County, and we're, we're right in the middle, right? Yeah. Our industrial rates, as Jeff mentioned, they're competitive, but they're not as low as some others in the state, just because we don't have, we never did serve the paper mill, that's owned by, or served by Quepco. So we're, are getting a, a bigger base of commercial customers, as Ocean Spray expands, and Metallco is adding more load this coming year. So, um, those things will eventually drive down our, our commercial and industrial rates as well, but they're still competitive.
Thank you. I, I just think, you know, everyone's always doom and gloom about rates, and I just wanted you to point out that it's not as bad as people think it is.
I think it's in that PowerPoint as well, that I, we gave to the council before the meeting, so.
No, that sounds good, I appreciate it. Uh, we rarely lose power in our neighborhood, and which is much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So Waterworks and Lighting is a city-owned asset. Tim, do you know by chance how much that asset is valued at?
I don't have that offhand, sorry.
I've seen the, I feel like when we get alerts or someone looks at the... Nah, I've, I've seen the number somewhere. Water and Light being a city-owned asset, going through this multiple years, I can't always understand why we operate so separately, and we only see you guys at budget time. Just everything's completely separate, and I understand it's because of the, a long time ago, the council's wishes to assign it a commission. But being that it's a city asset or a city department, I feel like it needs to be more fluent, that it feels like it along with the rest of them, because it, it's almost like they live in two silos, but they're, they're all under the city.
I think it's because we're running a business, and it's not necessarily politics. You try to keep the politics out of running a business typically. And we do, as I said, pay over two million dollars to the city every year to operate. We've always offered to come to council meetings quarterly or whatever, to give progress updates or what have you, and we'd be happy to do that, but it's never been, it's never been of interest to the council, since I've been here, sixteen years.
Well, I think it's of interest. I don't, I don't think you guys need to come to every common council meeting, but I, the two organizations, I think we need to get ourselves aligned more. It's almost like we're not even part of the same structure, and really, Water and Light isn't asset of the city. And it, it seems like that year-over-year, I'm not saying anything you guys do is wrong, I'm just talking about going forward and, and a different type of relationship, because as a alderman, I'll give you an example. A neighbor of mine, she had a, a well inspection. So she calls Water and Light, and obviously it's a city ordinance, so then she comes to me with essentially a complaint about Water and Light. I don't, I don't even feel like we have much of a relationship there, but I.
That's, that's actually a program you threw over the fence to us, because it's so far behind the DNR process, and we're bringing it back up to speed, so.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but it, it feels, she's calling because I'm her, I'm who she voted for. But in regards to Water and Light, since we function so separately, it's almost like there's nothing there but to address the relationship specifically, because I can't.
You do elect a council member every year to be on our commission?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
But it just seems like we live in these silos, and I would, I would like to see going forward us kind of be on the same page. It, all being city assets and city departments, I understand you guys are running a business, but, I mean, at a smaller scale, so are some other city assets, like an aquatic center or a library. Did, here, for our city departments here, we're given three percent, and you guys are given four. I think it's where it might get a little.
Different types of jobs.
Every department is.
Correct, and ours are much more competitive. We could be recruited by an investor-owned utility, a co-op. We've gotta pay our lineman competitive, or they'll, they'll start leaving. I know municipal general managers of their.
I know municipal general managers are there losing lineman hand over fist. And as Jeff indicated, it takes about $125,000 of on-the-job training to get them to where they can actually touch something hot. I don't think you have any position in the city that requires that.
I'm not the go-to on that. I think we have some positions that take qualifications as well, but I'm not going to get into a comparison. The other question I had, and this might be specifically an accounting question, is we've been going through our whole budget, and we see that we pay to Water Works and Lighting and all these different areas of the budget. And it being a city-owned asset, I always just assume it's for accounting purposes. But I've never confirmed it, and I've never got a more detailed explanation on that. So if I could get one now, I'd appreciate it.
Do you have an example of what you're talking about?
We've talked about a bunch this week.
Are you referring to in the, you know, the operating budgets where you see the electric or WLLC?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are utility costs?
Right. But when you look at that, WWLC is a city asset, it's essentially like we're paying ourselves. So is that an accounting feature?
Well, it's a separate, you know, just like we allocate costs between departments and functions and different revenue sources. It's, you know, Water and Light is a separate entities, but they provide utilities, just like, you know, they pay wastewater charges. And our departments pay wastewater charges because they're separate operations and separate funding sources.
So it is accounting-based, then, is why we do that?
It goes back to the whole thing I talked about before with the Public Service Commission. If you're consuming electricity or water, I mean, we do an entry ourselves for utility, used water and utility used electricity, cost-cuser has to pay for that. We can't, we can't charge a customer class more or less than what the tariff states. I mean, that's PSC code. We have to charge. If that water is used, if that electricity is used, we need to charge somebody for that.
So even though we're shifting accounts in some cases, it's required by the PSC?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Jay?
So I just would like to say I am the council rep for Water and Light and Jake, and I can tell you, you've never come to me with a question. I mean, that's fair, right? I mean, if you ever asked, or, and just a reminder, the library, the wastewater treatment plant, we all have, they all have reps from the council on there. So I don't, I guess I don't see, and maybe it's because I'm there every month, but I don't see where the, where we're not lined up with Water and Light. I don't, I guess I'm missing your point here a little bit.
I wouldn't say lined up necessarily. It's, when you, when the budget comes through, and it's a, it's a large budget, large revenue base, it doesn't seem, we do have an alderperson appointed there. But it doesn't seem like we get much outside of budget time unless we go out and reach for it. But that, that's just my opinion. As you said, I could reach out more and ask, but...
Well, and I can tell you, my experience has been if I have questions for, Jeff has been good about answering questions. Jim, we've got another board member here, feel free to reach out anytime. And I can tell you right now, it's pretty technical. If I don't have an answer, I guarantee you somebody over there does, so.
And that, yeah, it is technical, and that's, but I find it important, I get, that the council just have more relations with the Water Works and Lighting. And whatever that is, I don't know. But perhaps if we can just meet more than the once a year, or have you guys come in and give us an update? Because like tonight, you're fitted in with a bunch of other budget meetings, and there's endless amounts of questions or things I'd like to explain, but they're so technical, and we don't see as often.
And I will go and verify, like I mentioned before, I assumed you all received the financial statements in the monthly packets, so I will verify if those aren't being received, that those are included in your packets from the commission that get sent out monthly. So at least you have that information. So I do apologize if that is not happening.
So regarding one of the line items in the budget, that's to WWLC, and I think this is accounting as well, but we pay them to calculate the utility fees for stormwater and transportation.
Right. There's a, for, they charge us a monthly fee to collect the wastewater and storm sewer utility fee.
That's also a PSC requirement. They have a ginormous water utility reference manual, and one of those things in there essentially says, you know, it goes back to that whole point we talked about a couple times, you know, fairness to the ratepayers, the cost-cuser pays for it. So if the sewer utility is using the water meters to get the usage, to able to bill at the end of the day, the Public Service Commission says we do need to charge the sewer utility for that service.
The stormwater?
No, well, this is the wastewater.
Yeah, I'm talking about the stormwater and the transportation.
Stormwater, there's a, there's a small charge. It's basically, I think it's $14,000 in 2023. That's essentially recouping the utility's costs when there's, when there's changes to the ERU, which sounds like there might be this year. You know, there's a cost to our software to program that. It's somewhere between probably $800 to $1,000 with our software provider. There's monthly license fees for the utility to actually bill the sewer, stormwater and sanitary sewer. So we have monthly recurring costs, and there's also labor costs that the utility has to do. All these move-in, move-out orders, when a customer moves in or moves out, they're verifying those charges are there. When a new business comes in, our customer support manager is working with engineering to say, you know, how much should this person be charged? And that's both on the storm sewer and the transportation utility. So there's costs that the utility's having, and it goes back to that whole idea that the Public Service Commission says we have to do, you know, we have to bill that back because, in fairness to the ratepayers.
So how do you come up with the number to be billed back for adding the transportation utility and the stormwater outside their electric bill? That's already going out.
Sure. Transportation utility in 2022, we charged, I believe it was $25,000 is what we charged. There was two people that worked pretty much nonstop for two months getting that data put into the system. So we kind of did the math on two people fully loaded rates. We had software charges to get that system implemented, and there's ongoing. There's probably about 10 hours a month that the customer service staff does to maintain the transportation utility charges. Still currently now, I mean, when a new person moves in, moves out, a new business comes in, we're in contact with engineering saying, okay, there's this new business, what do you want to charge them? There's a lot of back and forth to get that number calculated correctly.
So Joe's giving you a trip rate on new businesses moving in and out?
He does.
Okay.
It'll be, so, for example, the Shopko, what's going on at Shopko? Someone five below opens up, he'll give us what that charge should be for that business. We'll add it to their bill and verify it, audit it, make sure it's right, and kind of go from there.
Okay. So what we pay for calculating transportation, utility, and stormwater is labor and software expenses?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, yeah, software and labor, so.
Dennis?
Okay, thank you. I just have about three questions here. On page six here, you've got replacing utility poles. And I'm not questioning so much the $800,000, but you have an outside consultant. Do you know who offhand, who you contract with, or what they charge you on this?
We used Karch as a business that tests the utility poles. I'm not sure what the fee is per pole. I know we have money budgeted in the 2024 budget to test another round of poles. It's been about four years since we've tested poles, and we're pretty much caught up with the area that we tested back in 1920. So we're ready to move on to the next part of town. Test the poles, the poles that are either in danger or have failed, those will be the ones that get replaced over the next number of years.
Do you change any, do you go with the normal pole, or do you go something different, or?
Normal pole.
Okay. Okay. The other question I have is on page 13, and I'm just curious here. You've got $18,000 on furniture for two offices. Can you give us just a little history as to why they have to be replaced?
I just know the furniture is, I'm not sure when that was put in. I'm probably in the, probably the late 80s, I'm guessing. And it's just, it's kind of on the spot to be replaced. I don't have any other details for you, I'm sorry.
Nobody has sat in any chair and broken them or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
I know years ago, one of your meetings, that happened. So that's history, but, but do you have any idea what they want to replace? I mean, are we looking at chairs or desks, or?
It's two engineering offices. It's our, our main engineer and our other engineer. It's replacing their office furniture, so their desks and bookshelf and, and things like that.
Okay. Then, the last question I have, going a little bit more on, with how you come up with your wages. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, do you still have a union, or is that?
No, we don't.
That's what I thought.
No.
Who negotiates, how do you negotiate? Are you coming up with the 4%? There was a time when you had union, you know, there was a union, and there were negotiations about, I believe, every three years.
Right. So like I mentioned, the 4% is a placeholder, there's no guarantee. January 1st, every Water and Light employee is making 4% more than they made December 30th.
No, I understand what you said earlier, but...
So the number was, we looked at CPI inflation, which is 6. something, 6.4, I think, or something like that, looking at January. Looking the difference last year, looking at some of our comparable salaries that have been in the past, and just putting a placeholder in the budget. And in December, when the commission meets to discuss that, that's a number that they'll have to make a decision, to make a decision less than that. You know, again, it's kind of that balance of ensuring you don't lose somebody over a small percentage raise. I know my customer service manager just went down to a meeting with the investor-owned utilities in Madison yesterday, and that was one of the biggest things they talked about. And that was in the customer service area, is the number of people they're losing, and the less productivity you have because you're losing, losing these people. And we have a small office, a six customer service rep. So you lose one person, that's asking a lot of that staff to pick up and do those things. And that's why we came up with that number.
But now, on, does everybody, not, not everybody I know doesn't get the 4% or the 3%, but you go, or do they, I mean, you have other people that work there, not just linemen. I'm not questioning theirs, what they get paid, I understand what they do, but...
Right. So we'll go through, we'll look at our region, we'll look at our comparables within the state, and we'll look at our APPA, American Public Power Averages, to see, you know, what are comparable positions being paid. And it's looking at a combination of state, looking at those just to say, you know, are these people compensated similar with their peers or not? So one person might get three and a half, one person might get two and a half. It just depends kind of on where those wages kind of match.
Okay. And then do you kind of, not to prolong it anymore, but do you also look at the fringes, too? Is that included in that 4%? When you, is this a yearly thing that you do, or?
It's a yearly thing we look at, yes.
So you get away with the three, three years with, like, the unions, yeah?
With the unions gone, it's an annual review that everybody looks at. So it's a little more proactive. And, you know, we still see the investor-owned utilities contracts come out, and those are definitely a lot higher than that number for an annual increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to remind council, you know, because Jake brought it up, too, the wells. Anytime you have a question, just reach out to them. You know, I got calls on those well permit fees and why the fees are more now than they were. I reached out to Jim and Jeff, and they put me in contact with Adam over there, and provided me with the information exactly what was going on. So I highly recommend, just if there's a question, no matter how small it is, just reach out, because they've helped me every time I've reached out. Thank you.
Hey, Tim. The payment in lieu of taxes, is that set, is it, is it set strictly according to the land that is being used, and there's a number that's figured out if that were something else? Or is it for what it is right now, and that's all the land throughout our city?
The pilot that Water and Light pays the city?
Yes.
It's a, it's a PSC calculation based on the value of their, their assets. And, yeah, yeah, within city limits. So for, yeah, for water, it's mostly within, but obviously, electric extends beyond, so those are excluded from that, from that calculation. And then it's based on tax rates of the local and school district.
Okay. So that's, it doesn't have anything to do with us? Again, it's, okay, so you guys may get a little frustrated with us, but we don't always have time to get hold of everybody. Maybe that's an excuse, but to me, this is pretty informative, I think. Good questions have been asked, and, you know, I don't think anybody's looking to, you know, ruffle feathers. Well, maybe, but I think it's important that we do this, and I appreciate it. You know, because in my mind, I'll, everything that I listen to and try to figure out is, how do we, how do we get more money into our budget to figure out the roads? And everybody else, for the most part, I guess, gets what they want. And I always feel like I'm not sure what I'm doing here, because I'm just kind of rubber-stamping something that doesn't help us out. So I appreciate you guys coming in, because it, you know, I, I think, I know you guys do a great job. And I'm very happy that you guys are here and doing the job. And ultimately, I don't feel qualified right now to be able to, you know, take on the mission of Water Works and Lighting Commission. So I appreciate all you guys doing that, and doing a good job at it. But at the same time, I look at it, like we were saying, and it's, like, how does it work? If it's a privately-owned electric company, there's shareholders then, right? And they're getting something back for owning that. And I'm not saying we're not getting anything back, because I know we got the pilot, and I know we have 27, 28 rates, you know? So it's not that we're being, you know, I guess I'm just looking at, is, is there something that we're missing? Or is it specifically this way for a reason that has been decided in the past that we should know about now because we, we don't know about it?
I believe it's, I mean, it's the pilot payment that is kind of the benefit to the city. So it's nearly $1.8 million in 2023 that the utility, that the utility paid the city. If it was, if Water and Light was an investor-owned utility, that payment would be substantially less, because it would be additional gross revenue through utility aid. So that number would be a lot lower than the $1.8 million.
If it's, you're saying if it's privately-owned?
Right, right. So...
But then they figure out, I mean, they're getting paid for their, for owning the utility. So then the pilot's gone, you know, going to the state or most of it, but there's another payment out there. And, but again, we, we designed it as such that we, as the city, own it, but we don't get any kind of, we get the pilot, I understand that, but we don't get any kind of dividends or anything like that. And that has been designed, I'm just asking if it was designed this way from the beginning? Or was something decided along, something that helps us understand, like, how everything plays out between the city and the WWLC? Does anybody know, or?
I guess you, you can arbitrarily decide to give the city an extra million dollars, correct?
Can we ask for it, is what I'm asking, I guess.
Oh, right. I just wonder if there's a PSC ruling saying you can only do pilots? Or does the PSC, I think what Matt's looking for is, as a parent company, what's the benefit to the city by owning your own utility? to the city by owning your own utility outside of the pilot? And can you arbitrarily say, we're going to give you an extra million dollars?
I think the trouble comes into, again, the, the fairness to the rate payer, so you're, you're building up these reserves, you're going to pay for future years' projects. Now you don't have that money that the rate payers put into the system.
But the utility can give a dividend to the city.
Sure.
And when we talk about rate, the rate payer, and again, I understand, because we're all, for the most part, we're all one of them, um, I mean, we're, I guess we'd have to understand what that means, if we go up by a, a quarter of a cent, or a half a cent, what that, what that means, and what that puts us if we lose ranking that way, how much that, you know, how much that hurts. I don't know. Is it, I guess that's, that's where my questions lie right now. And again, I'm not looking upside an apple cart or, or turning anything upside down, and...
We, we can provide a dividend, but then that prohibit, the PSC will prohibit the utility from borrowing money in the future, and we're on their radar for any rate increases. So it comes without peril, I guess.
Okay, what was the first thing again, sorry?
We, we will not be able to issue revenue bonds if we want to do a big project, if we're paying more than pilot.
The borrowing that you did, like, through us before, that wouldn't be able, or your own borrowing?
Our own revenue bonds, correct?
Your own?
We can do the COP, or whatever it's called, whether it's city or COP, yeah.
Do we typically, do you typically do your bar, own borrowing, or do you do it through the city?
When I got here sixteen years ago, the utility was in such a bad shape, couldn't pay their bills, the electric system was falling apart, we borrowed ten million dollars through revenue bonds. Um, and we refinanced it through the city six, seven years ago, or more, probably, um, which helped the utility reduce its interest rate.
Thank you for squaring away WWLC many years ago, and, and to today.
As Jay said, if there's any questions that come up, and if you want us to come to council meetings every so often, we'd be willing to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I was just, because I appreciate, um, I've learned a lot more tonight in itself than the relationship. And so, one question, and again, back to the relationship. So for instance, we just approved a three percent raise across the board for our non-represented employees, and, um, is there a reason why you guys wouldn't echo that? I mean, I understand we're, that's a part of the relationship, so in the cit-, in the city, that, um, we have a different overall, you know, general raise.
Sure, and I, not to be confrontational, but I'm guessing with the compensation study that was done, there's going to be additional, more than three percent of additional payroll happening in 2024, and that's kind of the same thing, is, you know, we kind of do these mini-compensation studies. If somebody's twenty percent underpaid, we're not going to move them up twenty percent to say, okay, we're going to make you the same as our comparables in the state, but you're going to get a little higher bump than somebody that's making five percent more than the average. So, um, again, it's a placeholder, it's going to be up to the, the commission, um, to make that decision in December, and, um, that's, that'll be their ultimate decision as far as what their percentage is.
Dean, just to comment on that, we look at comparables every year, okay, and we try to stay within reason, so that we're not going to lose the highly skilled people, but we haven't, you know, we aren't the top payer, but we try to stay in the median.
Well, I think we look at comparables of other cities too, in the same regard, so. Um, Jay?
So, just expand on that a little bit. It surprised me tonight, I, I guess I wasn't aware that customer service, that there were people looking to take our customer service people, but I can tell you, in talking to our line superintendent, and any one of you can call him, and he will tell you the same thing, that we've got a privately owned utility in the area that, on any given day, would be more than happy to take our lineman, and more than likely our line superintendent, and it's, um, it's important that we stay competitive. I, I want a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to train. We just, the city just stuck a bunch of money into, uh, training for our police department, our fire department, our street department, so I, I just think it's important that everybody stays competitive, city and Water and Light. Thank you.
Jay?
Yeah, I'm not trying to be contentious either, I'm just asking questions of things I don't know, or reasons why, um, things are the way they are. It was mentioned that there is an option to dividend to the city, but you would not be able to borrow your own debt? Is that correct? Is there more to that?
Um, I'm not sure of what the ramifications. I know that the piece Jim mentioned, where those, those costs wouldn't be recoverable in a future rate case. So like, right now, the pilot payment the utility makes to the city is included in our calculation to come up with our rates, to say this is our test year expenditures. My understanding is, if we went above and beyond that and paid the city more than that, that the PSC would say those costs aren't recoverable, you're going to recover those, what we call below the line, so kind of what that net operating income pays for, for future capital projects, you're going to have to take it out of that money, because we're not going to include those, that money. It's the same, like, when we pay our trade association, Municipal Electric Utilities of Wisconsin. A certain percentage of that is used for lobbying activities, but, so that part is not recoverable in rates, but the part where they do the safety training and the other trainings, that's recoverable in our rates. So it's kind of the same thing, where we'd have an unallowable expense that we could recover through future rate cases.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, because we've been creating, well, we created one utility, and we had recently, and then we have had stormwater. I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that that was an option. My second question would be, if, not saying we are, but this is knowledge, I feel we all need to know, if we did go to that and they weren't able to do their own borrowing, would they then borrow through the city? And do our bonds, which they refinanced at anyways?
Right, I mean, yeah, obviously, it's, uh, if the council chose that, obviously, if they couldn't issue revenue bonds and the council chose to use our GO capacity, we could.
But that does have impact to our capacity, whereas when they bond on their own, it doesn't affect our capacity.
Right, but, uh, you know, at this point, we're at, what, forty-five percent of our capacity, so there's, you know, there's obviously a lot of capacity available for something like that.
Thank you.
Dean?
They do need a motion to approve the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve Water and Light's budget.
I'll second.
Pedro?
Why do they need a motion to approve?
Yeah, each year, the, the council does approve the budget, and since it's not part of our budget, it's always acted on separately.
I think it's in the ordinance where it has to be approved by...
Ordinance has to be approved by the end of November.
Okay.
By ordinance. Whatever.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, did, did we have more questions or anything that we didn't want to vote on it now?
I just wanted to meet with them. He asked to meet with me, I haven't had time in the past week. Um, I did want to, I did have a, a ton of questions, and I didn't want to waste everybody's time here tonight.
Are you raising your hand?
Is it, did, you wanted to ask these questions before we, we voted or approved the budget?
I think it would be helpful for me to decide. I could just vote no, I'm sure it'll pass, like everything else does.
Well, I mean, technically, the committee of the whole minutes, if the motion's made here, it, it doesn't get finally approved until the committee of the whole minutes go to the November fourteenth meeting, or we could just, at the November fourteenth meeting, as part of the budget approval, we could put just the approval of the Water and Light budget. It's up to how you'd like to do it.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
Well, if they would withdraw their motion.
I'll just vote no. It'll pass. I'm a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I guess if we're... I don't want to vote no on this basis, but I also have additional questions, so... I, I don't know if they're appropriate to ask right now, because I, I need to gather my thoughts, so, um, I don't have any specific questions about Water and Light. Um, so I'll, I'll vote yes, and then my questions will come afterwards, and if anything changes, I'll vote no, but I, yeah, I wish we were delaying this a bit.
You wish what, I'm sorry?
I said I wish we didn't have to vote on this tonight, and then come back with, if we have any questions or changes. Just, it's, it was a lot to take in tonight, and we're just going to approve it, and then rubber stamp it on the fourteenth. I really got time to process, but...
Well, there's a motion and a second to approve the budget. And so I guess we're, um, we're devoted, and if there's any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't see. Pardon? Yeah, um, I didn't see who took them. Am I taking the note? Pardon? Jay, Dennis. I voted, I voted yeah. Um, Dean, and, um, Dennis, you voted no?
Vote for...
Oh, you said Dennis, I'm sorry, so, Derek, Patrick. And who else? Patrick and, and Jay. Okay, so motion passed, um...
Thank you, and I'd just like to say, you know, when you do guys have time that you want to talk and kind of have your questions, um, please, please reach out, um, and we can, we can find a time to meet with you both, and we'll get all your questions answered, so, thank you very much.
Tim?
What was the vote for, I'm just doing the minute, so I just want to make, five to two, the ni-, two negatives? Okay.
I did.
Pardon? Five to two.
He didn't.
Oh, yeah.
I got, I got questions I want to ask Tim that I, I don't want to say, yeah, I'm cool with budgets.
What?
Hey, do you want it called, Patrick? We can do it right now. It wasn't, but...
I, I'm sorry, what was the question?
He said they never called for the no vote.
I did too.
You just went off of who didn't, but we're just fine, I mean, in the end.
I didn't call for no? I never...
Okay, I'll kind of file, follow along the lines of how Tyler did IT, and, uh, just see if anybody had any questions off the top.
I'll page you on it anyway. Oh, gotcha.
Ryan? Can, can you highlight just any big things and kind of go through the rest? I don't have any...
Sure, absolutely. Um, so, fairly flat as to, um, last year, or this current year, 2023 for 2024. Um, our biggest, uh, one of our biggest expenditures that you'll see is the FIT program. That was, that's a, that was a, a heavy conversation last year, um, that is the advanced physical therapy. Um, it's been a very well-received, uh, program by the employees. Um, I just got the third quarter reporting today, uh, that they will submit tomorrow. Um, they gave us the, the numbers, and we're seeing, uh, approximately fifty, uh, individuals per month, um, and that's on approximately fifteen hours a week. And that was that sixty-two thousand dollar, sixty-two thousand dollar line item.
Any questions on that?
Okay. Thank you.
That was easy. Okay, and we'll go on to, uh, Kyle, community development.
Page that on. Do you guys want to start off with saying that was easy, or did you want me to, like, go through it? The biggest change, as you know, is the elimination of code enforcement from community development. Um, I'm not sure exactly how it slid into PD, you've already reviewed PD, but that and everything along with it is entirely gone from our budget, so that's the reason for the reduction. Uh, among other things, or, you know, things maybe went up a few thousand. I think most notable is, um, double the cost of the sealer of weights and measures, so we partner with the state to do those, uh, yearly. Uh, previously was about eight thousand dollars yearly. They then, last year, um, broke their inspections in a two-year cycle, so it reduced down to about four thousand dollars. They now have almost doubled their rate. So they still do it on a two-year cycle, but they almost doubled their rate, so now we're back up to about eight thousand dollars. So, I think that was the biggest change, was that difference of about, um, forty-four hundred dollars. Um, I'm sorry, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Other than that, uh, the differences are minimal. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Pedro?
Okay, so I've read through a lot of the ordinances here in the city. Is there any additional ordinances other than what's posted online? Um, because I get a lot of complaints about how it's tough to build here in Wisconsin Rapids. Are those unfounded claims? Um, is it personality issues with some of your staff? What's going on?
I don't think there's one answer. I think, um, uh, it's twofold. Um, you know, we have some, you know, we've got a three-hundred-page zoning code. Upon my arrival, I submitted, uh, some changes to that code, where I thought we could simplify the approval process, make things a little more easy at the staff level, less coming to plan commission, because when you tell a, a developer that they've got to wait thirty days before they can break ground and go to plan commission, if there's a conditional use or something else involved where council has to approve, that can be detrimental to a project, especially now, when people are trying to get their footings and foundations in the ground and line up their work for the winter months. Um, so I think, yeah, it, it can be some of the process. Um, I think my intent with some of the feedback I've received over the three years of being here is to maybe bring back some of those initial changes, uh, to the zoning code, to, again, request to simplify things. Um, I think a lot of you that watch plan commission, um, well, in anything that goes through plan commission from a zoning code standpoint, you'd see it anyways, but we've tried to simplify things. Oh, the, yeah, the mayor commented that previously the plan commission didn't support some of those changes, and I think it was partially because the zoning code had only been in place since 2018, and again, the easiest way to, to tell you is that zoning code regulates private property. Um, you know, as goofy as that may sound, uh, that's ultimately what it does. It regulates, uh, development, you know, it tells you how many parking stalls you need, how many plants you need for landscaping, and, um, a lot of times, we'll butt up against, um, more so small businesses and entrepreneurs that may think it's ridiculous that we have those requirements. Uh, so it's my job to enforce the code, and, you know, tell somebody how many plants and how many trees they need for their new construction project. Um, it's tough, though, because that individual is focused primarily on their business plan. They're not worried about how many parking stalls they need, what size their ADA sign needs to be, what size footing they need under their building. They're worried about how can they make money with their product or service, how can they get their business plan in place, how they're going to borrow, what lending institutions, what their capital stack's going to look like to get that building, or to get that project off and running. And oftentimes, that's done before... And oftentimes, that's done before we're even contacted, so a lot of times our office is having to chase down the things after the fact. Um, and so a lot of times we're not dealing with happy individuals and developers. We're, we're dealing with, uh, a high level of frustration at the start. And we do our best to try to handle those situations on a case-by-case basis. Um, but we also find that on a smaller scale, those entrepreneurs and businesses. Don't have a line item to do their due diligence, they're trying to take it on themselves. Um, whereas, you know, the big projects, the Metalcos, they'll pay somebody thousands of dollars to put in the time and effort. Get everything we need to go through the city approval process to run things smoothly, whereas the small business is trying to cut those costs. And we can fill that void, uh, we're here, we meet with a lot of small business, and that's where the chamber can step in as well and be that intermediary. Um, but we'll sit down and have several office conversations, um, to try to guide them through the process, to help them fill out the applications, to. Come up with a, you know, a hand-drawn plan instead of a professionally drafted, uh, multi-thousand-dollar plan. Um, but again, a lot of times it's after the fact. And that's what makes things difficult. So I think you've, you've already been briefed on what we've been trying to do to be more proactive in terms of trying to hold some educational sessions, to do some videos. Uh, we recently, um, in our office, did a video on our fence ordinance, so we kind of, um, yeah, our fence ordinance, we overhauled our fence ordinance. We reached out to all the local fence companies and held a webinar, that webinar is on our website now and can be used by members of the general public, citizens. And fence companies, we invited all the fence companies to participate, unfortunately, only one of them, um, participated. Nonetheless, the material's there, and we'll continue to, to play a proactive role and try to, uh, improve, you know, our communication and the enforcement of these codes. Um, I hope that has answered your question, I'm, I'll dovetail into another question that the mayor asked, and that was, how do we compare with other communities? And I think we're right in the middle. Um, I think you'll find regionally, uh, many other communities have very lengthy zoning ordinances. Um, from a building code standpoint, the IBC, the UDC, which are our commercial and our residential codes. They're enforced the same way, or they should be, because they're the same code throughout every community in the state of Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin has their own electrical code, it should be enforced across the board. Um. So if you go to one community or another, you should still be butting up against those same building code requirements. Zoning code is where it differs, I think, again, we're, we're right in the middle of the playing field in terms of. Um, you know, be how easy or difficult it is to approve different projects. You know, people joke that Madison is the most difficult, and if you wanna do something in Madison, you better slot in a six-month period. From the time you submit your application to the time that it's reviewed by council or plan commission. Um, so to say that most of, of our projects can get approved in thirty days. Um, unless it's a conditional use or a comp plan amendment, which is anywhere from forty-five to ninety, I think is pretty good, and again, about in the middle of the pack when we stack up against other communities. Um, again, anytime you develop in a township, um, I think that's an unfair, uh, comparison, because townships a lot of times are governed by. Counties, county zoning, the county assists, and they don't have near the same regulations when it comes to, uh, their zoning requirements and their standards for parking lots. And stormwater and landscaping and so forth, because the aesthetic isn't as great and isn't as demanding in those townships. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was still going, sorry. So, uh. Previously this year, we had, uh, a meeting where we talked about having two council meetings. Um, and I heard. That, I don't know if you talked with anybody about that, but, uh, some of the staff were unsure about it, they didn't really like the idea. Um. Can you? Speak to how that might help your organization if we're able to get these meetings done in a timely fashion?
I'll speak to a little bit of the history in regards to plan commission, so upon my arrival, uh, plan commission was meeting twice a month. Part of that reason was because, um, any certified survey map of four or less lots had to go through plan commission. Um, to me, that was an, an anomaly, most communities, if you have, if it's a CSM, four or under in terms of lots. It can be approved internally, we made that change about a year ago. Uh, but part of the reason why plan commissions met twice a month was for that reason. Um, I think also was because of, you know, every project right now, if it's new construction, addition, parking expansion has to go through the site plan review process. And that was one of the changes I had suggested previously, and that process, again, if somebody's just doing a simple addition onto an existing, you know, industrial building. You know, thousand-square-foot addition, doesn't necessarily have to go through plan commission if it doesn't increase landscaping, it doesn't increase parking, and it matches the existing building. My thoughts are no. Um, I think the pandemic, uh, and the, kind of the freeze in, in development, um, also. Uh, didn't necessarily trigger the need for two plan commission meetings, so we've been having them once a month and have continued to have them once a month. With regard to council, I would say about half, maybe a little bit less of the items that plan commission acts on. Council is the final adopting body, so when it comes to ordinance amendments for the zoning code, um, annexations, conditional use permits, uh, things of that nature. Common council is the final acting body. We don't have too many of those, again, anywhere from a third to a half of plan commission action items would require council action. So I don't necessarily think plan commission and anything else that our office handles would necessarily trigger having. A second council meeting, or would be of benefit to have a second council meeting. Nonetheless, if that's what council decided, you know, I'd be supportive of doing that and obviously try to, you know, get anything, uh, on those council meetings as necessary. The other difficulty in doing that is that a lot of things like, um. Comp plan amendments, conditional uses, they require public hearings, we have to get that notice in the paper typically, uh, with one insertion or two insertions. Which means we have to get it to the paper one week prior to the first insertion, so you're looking at, again, for a conditional use, a three-to-four-week lead time. Before we can actually act and take final action on that item. Which is why you, you might find people complain that, you know, why do I have to get an application in four weeks prior to a meeting? And then council has to act three weeks after the plan commission meeting, and now we're at that almost ninety, or almost sixty-day window. That's part of the reason, because statutorily, there are noticing requirements for certain actionable items.
State statutes, correct? Not, not.
Yeah, for like comprehensive plan, uh, state statute, yep. Um, conditional uses, I believe, are, Sue, I'd have to double-check that. Um. Annexations don't always require a public hearing if they're direct unanimous. Um. But yes, you know, there are other statutory things that plan commission, um, has to act on by statute. Uh, and that's, that's wherein it's different than some of the other committees like finance, which is solely just relating to the operations of the city. Plan commission is statutorily regulated, wherever we have zoning within the community, we have to have a plan commission that oversees that zoning code. And Sue, if you wanna elaborate on that further, feel free to chime in. She looks like she wants to.
So I'm excited to work with you on re- reviewing our ordinances, also coming up with some sort of packet. Where any new business that comes in, it's a checklist, and business, a lot of business owners are checklist people, makes it easy for them just to go, go down and make sure that they got all their ducks in a row. But, uh, I think making our. City easy to come in and build in and making it quick, I mean, those are two big things. Um, also, if staff is a little more friendly to people, I mean. So a business owner takes their business very personally, especially when they're building it on their own and stuff. And I've heard a lot of complaints that staff may not be the most friendly when they're, they've got violations. I mean, I think there's a way to deal with that, that is, uh. More conducive to bringing in other businesses as well as, uh, business comes in and say, hey. I built in Wisconsin Rapids, and we had an excellent experience from the first day, and I think that's important. And I think that's what we need to focus on, and, uh, I'm excited to, to work with you on that this next year.
The only additional comment that I would add is, again, since I've been here, we have created a lot of fact sheets, we've updated some of our old fact sheets. We've created lists, uh, if you're doing a residential home, what do you need, what's the steps in the process? We have a residential home packet that we give builders. Um, we've recently, in the last couple of months, finalized our commercial list of what you need. We've created, um, uh, one or two pagers on what sorts of work requires a permit in our office. So if you're a homeowner, you can download the residential fact sheet that says, if I'm doing A, B, and C, what requires a permit and what doesn't. It's all available online, um, we're thinking about, you know, ways we can be more proactive, doing different videos of the week or of the month to try to get that information out there, because. Not everybody is every morning with their cup of coffee jumping on the city website to see what new information's being uploaded. Uh, but they might find it on a Facebook link or, uh, some sort of advertisement. So we'll continue to do that, I'm a big fan of being proactive, um, to try to get the word out rather than reactive. And obviously, we'll always try to work on our communication and the ability to communicate, because at the end of the day. I want a good reputation with community, the community, the existing businesses, as well as those, uh, from the outside looking in and wanting to locate and build within the community. Thank you.
Jake?
Thank you for speaking to that, Kyle, I, I've come to the, and I appreciate, appreciate the fact sheets, Patrick said checklist. But I've come to the conclusion that we really need to take a look at the code, and I'm sure that's no surprise in saying that, I've said it. Yeah, I, I'm not pointing a finger at the community development department, or it, it really, I know you guys are enforcing the code, and the code is what it is. And it's a huge task, and I guess my question would be, does the community development department have the capacity to look at sweeping changes to a code?
I think the intent over time is to simplify things, um, you know. I think there was a transition that occurred, right, we went from a, maybe a hundred-page zoning code to a three-hundred-page zoning code. Granted, a lot of the appendices are additional fact sheets and things, but. We, we, our code is kind of a hybrid approach where some of it's form-based, um, the old one, I think, was more Euclidean in nature, and I, I won't get into the history with regards to zoning, but. I think from a development standpoint, there's a transition period whenever you transition from maybe something that was previously more simplified and something that now is, um, uh, more contextual or detailed. Um. And I wasn't here for that transition, I wasn't here for the adoption of this code. Again, I'm, I'm here, though, and now, and if I see ways that we can improvement, improve the code, simplify things from a development standpoint, I, I think I would always support those, and. We've talked about different things that we can focus in on and hone in on, and I think if the intent is over time, we can certainly make time for those, uh, as city staff. And, uh, am, you know, always willing to look at making positive change with all the, the codes we enforce. We've, we've done so with some of the building codes as well, uh, chapter fourteen, the sign code, we rewrote to better align it with. Um, some of the recent, uh, national legislation in terms of free speech. And, uh, and we'll continue to do so.
So you believe you would have the capacity to. Make sweeping changes to the code? Or, or what you spoke to there was more one at a time, different areas? The hundred to three hundred, it would be pretty difficult for you to go back, we're just talking pages, two hundred extra pages.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I would support a, a new rewrite of the zoning ordinance, but I think if we focus in on a problem. And we identify ways in which we can simplify that problem, it might mean amending a few different sections of the ordinance. Because usually if we amend a section, it's referenced elsewhere, we've gotta amend definitions or add definitions, like when we've added uses to the code, right? We didn't ever define truck stop, there were a couple others, uh, food pantry, we never defined. So I think it makes sense to make those changes, to add definitions, we have to slot it in a district, is it a permitted use, is it a conditional use? Um, obviously, you know, if we wanna, one of them, as an example, that I think we do need to make sweeping changes to is our landscaping standards. Um. I think while I enforce them, they seem maybe simple to me from an outsider with a point structure, and how many plants equal what number of points, and where do I need to put them? It becomes very cumbersome, and I think that's one that I'd like to focus on, um, in the interim. But the others are right, you know, trying to simplify what needs plan commission review, what doesn't, what can be approved internally. And, uh, if council or any council member has, um, specific examples of where we can make those improvements, you know, I'd. Request that you schedule a meeting with my office, and we'll sit down and try to hash out what an ordinance amendment could look like, and obviously bring it through plan commission and council to make it happen.
Thanks, Kyle, um, you had some?
I'm not.
Let's keep it on budget, okay? Let's, this is, this is a budget meeting, so we can talk about the.
Oh, we're, we're gonna do that now, even though I'm asking if they have the capacity in case.
Okay, let's talk about numbers then. Well, I'm just saying, we're in budget, this is, that's for another meeting.
I'm just curious, Kyle, uh, your thoughts on, since it's another budget, you're kinda being tasked a little bit with bridging the gap with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, the heart of Wisconsin. Is it something that you feel, um, is in your wheelhouse as community development to work closely with them? And if we were to approve the twenty-five that we would be able to, is it, is it fair of us to, to kinda lean on you to monitor something like that? To let us know if it's, if we're getting a bang for our buck there, or what are your thoughts?
I, I definitely support the chamber activities. Um, I think having another entity that assists with economic development that's more of a third party, especially with some of the concerns that have been brought up. But with regards to the difficulty in development, um, is good, and I think it's good to have that kind of outlet, um, for a business community. Whether that would still occur or not with the funding, I'll let you guys decide. Uh, but I definitely support, um, many of their activities, having another entity, uh, focusing on economic development within the area. Um, you know, we've taken advantage of some of their, um, different events that they've invited us to, where we can grow our skill set, we can make connections with developers and so forth. So there's, you know, there's more metrics and, and benefits that maybe haven't been talked about yet. Um, overall, though, it's pretty difficult to put a metric to economic development, because you can say. I helped so many businesses, or I did this many business visits, but how do you directly tie your visit to their growth? It's, it's almost impossible to do, um, unless, of course, you know, we're responding to an RFI request from the WEDC, like we did with Metalco, and now all of a sudden, boom. Your, this, your site is selected, Metalco's in your community, and you're talking about a development agreement and an incentive, um, with elected officials. Um, but those are, those are few and far between, um, for any community, uh, most of the, the economic development that occurs. Are from the ground up, so they're with the chambers, the CVBs, the other, um, leaders in the community and the conversations that are happening at a very smaller scale. That then start escalating and work their way up to our office, the mayor's office, and I think we all have a role to play within the, the conversation and the development. Um, but again, it is, it's, it's, it's very hard to, to put a metric or, or a measurement of, you know, funding, for example.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Um, along those lines, and Jake had come up with a pretty good idea, I thought, on the, a contract, if you will, for the chamber. If, asking them, you know, if they're, if, because one of the things I think we were concerned with is we really didn't know what the twenty-five thousand dollars was for. And so Jake had actually come up with an idea that maybe if we gave them, come back to us with exactly what this contract, if you will. Then we could do that, is, um. And then if they didn't. Do the exercises, then we would probably have to reconsider next year when the same request came up. Is that, in your opinion, is that a feasible? Idea? I, I know you were saying that economic development is hard to quantify, I get that. But if they said, um, this dollar amount went to preparing for the, this parade, and this is why we did it, and this. is why we did it and this is why we needed it, and then yes, next year, we did exactly that, so, and that's how we spent it. Is that something that can be quantified?
Yeah, I think it can be. I think any money management having accountability, you know, like us with department heads, we're quantifying our dollars that council is approving. And I think if there's any other, you know, allocations to other, you know, whether it's the chamber or the Humane Society or the other entity, yeah, there should be accountability and there should be, you know, performa built into their request, what specifically the dollars are being utilized for. So I think, I think that's just good money manage, money management practice. And I, I don't think that would necessarily deter the chamber. I think they could probably do that and do it relatively easily. And, you know, I guess it's just a matter of whether or not you guys determine if that's ultimately, if you find value in what that money's being spent on and if whatever's submitted, let's say in year 2024, year 2025, is that what you want? That, that dollars, those dollars to be spent on for those activities?
Well, I guess what I was thinking, I'd like to, I think, other council members could let me know if they agree, but I think I would like to weigh on your expertise on some of those ideas that they may come up with, agree with that. I mean, sure, it was your, you're the one that-
Yeah.
-the idea, so.
So the idea is, and the reason I was asking before, if community development has the capacity to make sweeping changes, is because if you don't, then I think we do need to budget some to have the municipal code, zoning, whatever section we want to pull out of it, from an outside consultant to come in and work with businesses to make it easier to operate in Rapids. I understand that your job is to enforce the code, help people work through the code. But what I'm hearing, what the chamber said the other night, is that it is not easy to operate or start in Rapids. That's what people are saying. So if, if the capacity is not there in the positions that are in community development, I'm not pushing blame, but I'm saying we need to find some to assist with that or we're never going to get where we need to be. And we might as well not give the chamber $25,000 to help fill out paperwork with community development. The whole purpose would be to look at Wisconsin Rapids and find out how it's, how to make it easier to do business here. And we also got to get rid of some of what's happening due to code and steps and approvals, which is that a lot of businesses stopping before it starts. They've run into how much they got to deal with and they don't do it. And that's why I'm saying financially, if we're going to talk about the budget, if the capacity's not there, we need to put some there so that we can address this issue.
Anything else?
Was that, were you asking for like a further explanation or response to?
The original question was, do you guys have the capacity to take that on? I know you guys have busy days and you have your regular work day and a ton of stuff already. If we had, for example, the chamber come in in a contract and work with your department on what might be sweeping changes to make it easier to do business, as long as it's within state standards, do you have that capacity?
So we have the capacity to do, to be proactive and to make policy changes, as we've discussed. We've kind of identified the proactive means that we've already taken. We've identified the policy changes that can happen. I think we can continue to make changes with regards to communication, how we communicate with businesses, when we engage with those businesses. And I think we can build our relationship with other entities in the community like the chamber, the CBB and others. The example that I think of is, you know, when I was in another community, we partnered with the chamber to do a business retention and expansion study where we visited, we did a survey, and then we had visits with like 80 different businesses. We found out pretty early that having a city rep there was a much different conversation than if we didn't have that city rep there, meaning that they were tight lipped and they didn't say much if the city rep was there. So there wasn't much value to having those conversations with the city rep. But once you remove that city rep, now the conversation started to grow and the chamber and the other partners, and we had a business representative from the business community that was there, started to have conversations about some concerns in the community. And it could have been a stop sign on a street corner, it could have been supply chain issues, things that maybe we could connect the dots to, things that maybe we couldn't, things like, that we've brought up with regards to the difficulty in developing in the community. And then we can start focusing in on those and through those business retention visits, if they, if that becomes the theme, obviously, I think we can gather that it's, it's a priority and something needs to be done. So there was value to having those, again, but there's, there's a cost to having those, right? And I don't think our office would have the capacity to do that, nor do I think the outcome would be as great if we solely did it versus if we had a third party like the chamber do it. I think you would get better results in that case. And I think that's where these dollars could be allocated for things like that, for things like educational training. You know, we brought up the partnership that we're trying to create with Midstate as well to try to have some education on, to educate contractors and citizens on development within the community. It's one thing if we do it, but I don't think it'll be as well received versus if Midstate or that third-party agency or entity does it.
I know, but they can't write municipal codes. So my question is, with your current staffing and no plan for any outside contracts, if businesses come forward and say that we need changes to the code, do you have that capacity to do that if it is potentially large?
We do, and if, if obviously those changes make sense and they're supported by elected officials, yeah. But I think, I think that whenever you're trying to tackle a larger problem, it's, you know, the, the response can be done in a multi-phased approach, right? It might not just be a quick code amendment. There might be additional things that need to occur for us to fix that problem, depending on what it is, right? A stop sign on a corner is an easy fix. But most of the stuff that I think would come up is going to take much more than a simple infrastructure improvement or a simple code amendment.
So, so no?
So I think we have the capacity to look at the code, to make those changes. I don't think we have the capacity to do business retention and expansion visits.
I'm not talking about that.
Well, I was using it as an example. I don't know what specific examples you've cited other than the code amendment changes, which yes, I think we have the capacity to do.
Okay.
Are there other specific examples of sweeping change that you'd like our office to do?
Yeah, the problem of businesses saying that the city is hard to do business in and some of them don't even look towards expansion or get shut down throughout the process. There's somewhere in the code, I don't think it's you answering the phone and hanging it up, that is the reason for that. And if that needs to be rewritten, that's going to either take staff or an outside contractor. So I'm trying to figure out where that needs to happen, if it can happen with current staff or if it's something that in 2025, if we work with the chamber this year, we're going to need to look at allocating some money or if we need to do it this year. Because it does need to be done, because if we leave things as is, I don't think that perception of the city's going to change. I mean, we spent money to get to this code, we might need to spend money to get out of it if your department doesn't have the capacity to take on such a large project.
So I would think we'd have the capacity to make changes to the code, but I don't necessarily think that a problem like that is solely a code-related issue. I think it's going to, you know, a business's troubles could result from, you know, not having a adequate business plan, from not being able to access capital, from not being able to access workforce, from not being able to act, to find a site within the community to, you know, communication, right? So I, I don't necessarily think we can fix all those and have the capacity to provide solutions to all their problems, but every business is different. And if a business has, is struggling because of our landscaping standards or there's a common theme that it's very hard for a business or an entrepreneur to, you know, overcome our landscaping standards, then yes, I think we need to look at overhauling those. And that's an example of something in our code that we're already aware of that I think we can take a proactive step to fixing. It's the best answer I can give you. If, if, if you want to have more conversation-
Yeah, we'll have more conversation. I'm trying to keep it budget-specific, but I guess we'll see how much the discussion mounts on if we need outside capacity that would cost money or, or not. But I'm not going to get too off of talking about budget as the chair at.
Tom?
Yeah. I don't want to get off the budget discussion, I don't think I am, but it's a, it's a, I keep hearing about this, all these problems, but I don't hear what the problems are necessarily. You know, and that's why for tonight's meeting, I don't think that is the case. But if somebody doesn't like that they have to plant a tree, my problem is that probably small businesses, maybe is what it is, they want to write whatever they can, the cheapest they can be that they see fit. Then they come in and see what our rules are. Instead of the other way around, coming to the, to the city, hey, what are your rules? Not for us reacting to it, here's what the rules are. If we want ourselves to look like an outlying township, well, we won't have sewer, won't have sewer and water to acquire these businesses, have these businesses come in. I don't know, I'm getting sick and tired of being this gloom and doom sit-through and don't get the toll what all these people don't like. It costs money to run a business. And if it's run right, they make money. And we got rules. Now, if somebody doesn't like the rules, present the changes or bring in the outside. Let's not have any. Let's go back to dirt roads. Let's snowplow when it's only six or eight inches deep. If you don't like something, present what you don't like. Not that I got all these calls, tell me what the calls are. Then we can react to that. We have the ordinances because of, that's what people wanted. That's what they saw fit. If some of the ordinances outlive maybe their timeframe of how it was 25 years ago, present the, to change it. We can't just say to staff, change this. Well, leaning our input or whoever's input into what actually do you want them to change? If a couple people hadn't sat here so long, I would be making a motion to adjourn. And it's non-debatable. And it doesn't take a second. It takes a vote, though. We've got a couple people that have sat here for hours, listening to this. And I don't mind sitting here if the discussion is fruitful. If somebody's got a bug to bite, an ass to bite, or whatever, do it. Have the guts to do that. We have become a council split. And the only way to survive is to cut and decimate what the city does have. If you don't want to spend the money, or you don't want to do this, make the motion to not do anything, whatever it is. And that's what I see that we've had in the last few years. We're coming in to take whatever, but we don't really know how, you know, we don't know how it was done. We get the budget after it's been fine-tuned. There's very little wiggle room left unless somebody wants to say, I want to cut X amount of dollars from somewhere. And we're still faced with that $2 million. For how the department operates, I guess, can be talked about or whatever, whenever. But how that is to be done, I think is at a different time than this. We're going, if we're going to have the community development change how they do things or whatever, and if they need more people, I don't know that's for here unless somebody says we want to add that person for next year. Not what if or whatever. Those background discussions should have taken place. If you want a drastic change. And it's not just to say, do it, it takes the majority to do it. Not just because I got a bug. The other seven better have that bug too, or it wouldn't fly. How we've been operating here the last few years is shameful. Without getting specific on what we want to cut. I don't want to run business out of town, I'd like them to come in. But to listen to what's going on here, hell. There's a lot more problems to bring a business in than what our code enforcement is and that type of stuff. Perception of what people see or want to see. What actually are people getting told on the phone back, they're getting all these hundreds of calls? Put out a proposal, how to change things. Eliminate every ordinance that we can and have none. Have everybody's yard looking like a few that are by me even. And when I say that, I don't mean great. And when I say that, I don't mean great. These other businesses that are in business, yes, to try and whatever, develop a business, build something. But we're in the business of what we want our community to look like. That doesn't mean we can't have things that are streamlined to get through the process. But this nickel and diamond and then getting nowhere with it has become ridiculous. I better not say this one because it will be off the budget probably, but. When I get told that I submitted to add a couple of council people that I was, I was looking out to protect my own job on this floor. Became quite whatever concerning. This council needs to wake up. It can't run on bare bones. The city can't. If you want to field the calls, at some point in time, you have to answer the call. Not just say, hey, this guy doesn't like that, that gal doesn't like that. What are your feelings on it? Besides coming in and attack that we have to change everything. Because somebody's got a bug. Bring it on the floor of all these complaints, what the people don't like at the appropriate time. And if we have to adjust the budget or something, then we can. Not just these hearsay calls. Threatening calls maybe that I fielded. So I would suggest that we finish up this evening to the best that we can. And I suggest if somebody wants to look at whatever with the ordinances or whatever, to me to go through the process. So the facts and everything are laid out before we get to this. Is it just? It's just become sickening. Water and light was here earlier. Jay knows what it is. I used to be able to get to their meetings somewhat on a regular basis, but I haven't been able to because of the conflicting other meeting at about the same time. It's a very technical operation. We're kind of the overseer of what goes on. We have to get that, we have to be told, given the information and to try and make the best decision that we can on anything. Somewhat I'm hearing with some of this is what councils were accused of 25 and 30 years ago. When people were saying we were running businesses out then. Micro managing nickel and diamond. Water and light was a prime example. So listen to some people that got that bug. It's not new. If there are changes that can be made, yes, let's look at it. The relationship we have with people other than they don't like certain things. It's a lot better in my mind than what it was years ago. Is there room to improve? Maybe so. And if so, we can do it. Like I said, I was tempted to move to adjourn. I figured I'd probably lose anyway, but uh, so that's a and these other people have sat here. So I'm not going to disrespect that. With that, I'll close. I just, I, I got the bug and hopefully I got it off of me too tonight because it's, listening to this is just instead of complaints, put it out there what they are so we can react to something. Thank you.
Jay?
I'm good. I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Sorry Derek. Um, yeah, all right.
Thanks, Kyle.
And then let's move on. I didn't think community development would take that long. Sorry, I should have put you first there. But we're gonna, let's move on to wastewater.
Goodness, Derek.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, first of all, does anybody have any questions right off the bat? Uh, if not, I'll just explain a little bit of, uh, the budget for 2024. So uh, first off, there won't be a rate increase for this year, so everything will remain the same that way. Uh, this budget was reviewed by, uh, the wastewater commission October 11th, um, with their approval. Um, just moving line by line, um, staffing at the wastewater plant and the, in the collections department will remain exactly the same. Um, for the most part, there's not too many big increases in the budget. For operations at the wastewater plant, uh, one of the bigger ones would be that, uh, the electric went up and I don't really have too much control over that. So, other than trying to maintain the best operations as we can, just to keep that lower and, and more efficient, but that's just from, from everything else going up. Permits and testing, uh, went up, I budgeted an extra $7,000 and that's just for, um, shipping and sampling. A lot of those tests have gone up and a lot of the shipping costs have gone up. Some of the big ticket items for this year would be um, replacing the Dewey Lift Station MCC. Um, it's something that we wanted to do last year, but it got put off for, um, other projects. But the, the Dewey Lift Station is, is one of our biggest lift stations. It's right next to the hospital. It takes approximately over 30% of our entire flow. Um, the, the controls in that um, in that building for our pumps are extremely out of date. Um, it's getting almost impossible to find any replacement parts for them. Also, there is only two pumps at that station, which most of our big stations have at least three pumps, so there's not very much redundancy there. Um, it is a, a major um, major lift station for us, one that we can't bypass if we have to, so I want to make sure we get that up to date and, and up to speed for, for, um, parts that we can actually get on time and, and parts that we can actually replace. So, uh, the other item would be our treatment plant cap, uh, capacitors. And this is, um, on our power bank, which helps clean up our power to the utility. So since we have a lot of, um, variable frequency drives at the plant, it can cause havoc on, uh, Water and Light's electrical grid. And we can get penalties because of that. Um, some of the penalties can range up to, uh, we've had them as high as $5,000 when $5,000 for a month when, when that bank isn't working correctly. And, um, so basically replacing that for $38,000 would probably pay for itself fairly quick. Uh, the capacitor bank we have right now has some issues that are going to need to be addressed anyway for about $12,000. So uh, putting the money towards, uh, a better capacitor bank that is actually going to last, um, is definitely the best choice. I guess you probably, I don't know if you probably talked about it in Public Works, but, um, some of the projects for sanitary sewer construction are on here too. Uh, that budget, it's like 1.5 million for some of those projects. Uh, we do sewer lining every year. Uh, we put 272,000 away for that and, um, the project we're doing this year is part of 17th Avenue. Uh, we hope to finish that with this coming budget. Some of the utilities, I, you guys are probably aware of most of them, but Wiley Street, Ninth Street, Lincoln. Um, that's all kind of coordinated with, um, city engineering. That's some of the major stuff. If there's any other questions that arise.
I have one. Um, on the sewer utility billing, when I was looking at the historical, the actual in 20, 292, 21, 29, 305, then went to 336. Why did we drop it to 300 for this year's for 23 and then back up to three, the same number that it was in?
Yeah, um, so I actually learned where I can get those numbers better and that was actually from Jeff Kuhn. So last year when I did it, um, I was matching, I just matched a number that was in there from, uh, the previous year. And then this year when I saw it, saw those going up, I adjusted it to, to make it actually reflect what it really was. But for next year, I'm actually going to call Jeff and get that number exactly. So.
So you, you think that 2023 will be over 300 then?
Um, yeah, based on the, you know, the 2022 actual. It's kind of hard.
Yeah, it's closer, it'll be closer to align with the rest.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that number just was off.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's, it's kind of hard because when we're putting them together before August, it's only, there's a huge chunk missing, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Jake?
I just got a question about the contracted services that we didn't have in 2022 and had in 2023, now again in 2024. What are those?
Yeah, um, contracted, so I have two different spots. The, the one for the plant contracted services, I use for several different things. So, um, one of the, one of the things I used it on, uh, this year was we have, um, some, some major erosion going on in some of our affluent channels and it's, it's going to be a feat that we can't really handle ourselves.
I'm talking about the sanitary sewer maintenance.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, so those contracted services, um, that was used for, um, a couple manhole repairs. Uh, we keep, I'm just going to keep some money aside for that. Um, every year, we kind of find a few manholes that have a lot of H2S corrosion. Um, it's something that we shouldn't just replace because it's going to happen again because of the gases in the sewer. So uh, there's some different techniques out there that you can use to repair the sewers. Um, and one is like a cured in place pipe. Um, there's some spray liners, things like that that we can use. So I, I put that money aside for that.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Last one is, uh, Mr. Tim.
Sure. Uh, the finance budget starts on page 39. I'm just going to go through some of, you know, obviously the wages and benefits are for the the four staff people that we have in, in my department. Some of the bigger, uh, operating, uh, expenses, one of them being our, any software support contracts. We have uh, various software that is our munis accounting software, support fees, that's our main accounting system. Payroll and, uh, human resources. Uh, we have our ACS accounting system. That's what we use for the, the cost system. For our cost system employees, for their activity-based, uh, payroll and accounting for that. Um, RT Visions Accounting Software, that's the software we're using that because right now we have paper daily time sheets that the employees fill out and they have, we have count cost codes where they, depending on whether they're working or gets entered into the ACS and then that gets interfaced with our GL to the appropriate budget account. Well, the RT Visions Accounting Software will basically, where the employees will be able to just to input their time and then we can import that so we won't have to hand, they won't have to do daily time sheets, just input their time daily and then we will, obviously won't have someone to have to enter those into the system.
So this software and, and you're talking about importing it, does it go into munis then?
Right, it goes into ACS and then we import it into munis.
Okay, thanks.
The other big guy is obviously our financial audit. Each year we have to have a financial audit. And those are the fees with there, but also every two years we have to have an actuarial uh, study done for our post-employment benefits, which is basically retiree health insurance. And we have to have that because that has to be incorporated into our financial, our annual financial statements. So that's the fees that goes with that. And then obviously city hall rent, uh, went up. It's because, uh, we used to have IT up in the finance department. And they moved out, so basically that square footage got allocated to the finance department. So we have a nice big empty area back there if anyone's interested. So we have a nice big empty area back there if anyone's interested.
That was good.
So if anyone has any specific questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Well, looks good. Go ahead. You have a question yourself?
Can I ramble on some more? I just wanted to update the, the committee on the budget. As, you know, I distributed a budget draft to everyone, and basically that's just kind of the budget as it stands today. Because we had to publish the budget, you know, 15 days prior to the public hearing, and then we always have a document available to the public, if, you know, if it's requested. So I kind of had to make some assumptions in there, obviously, but obviously this is subject to change. So it's just kind of this, where, you know, where we stand today, and I just kind of, you know, made some assumptions on the ARPA funds and stuff. But obviously, it's just, so we, so we had something that we could work towards, or the public could start to review. But obviously, I put a big disclaimer on there because obviously we're still in the midst of, of doing the budget. Also, I will be distributing new departmental budgets because based on the wage study and the cost of living increase, most of the department budgets changed in the wage and benefits. So I made all those adjustments. I incorporated them in this document, but I'll be distributing you the new department budgets, but nothing in there has changed except for just the way, the effects that the wages and benefits to the, to the wage study and the cost of living. So I'll be emailing that out. Or do you want hard copies? No hard? Tom, you want one? Okay.
Yeah, I'll take a hard copy.
Okay, or do you just want me to, hard copy, okay.
Come here, bud.
Okay. All right, I just, you know, so obviously I just wanted to, and then also I wanted to get this document in your hands because if someone requests it, and they call you up, you have something to refer to maybe that they're, they're looking at, so. Do you want to recognize anybody out of the audience before we wrap this up?
Yeah, is there anything on the audience, like saying anything?
You guys are aware with the room tax budget, 70% of the room tax gets allocated to them, and they do come in on an annual basis and give you a presentation. So and then, you know, Meredith, I was talking, and maybe next year we time out their annual presentation, my, kind of like, in September, like with budgets, so that way, if you have any questions on their budget, and then also they'll always like to give an update. That would be good timing, I think.
And how much does that come out to yearly?
So, so for, in the, in the 2004, or 24, 2004. 2024 budget, the estimated room tax is about 500,000, so the 70% would be 350,000.
Thank you for sitting through this. I mean, thank you for visiting. Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh, in favor, say aye. Aye.